Excuse me, I'd like to call the order of the San Rafael City Council Meeting of Monday, March 18th, 2019, ask you to join us in Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, sorry for being a few minutes late, but thank you for joining us this evening. Excuse me. We met in closed session, I'll ask Mr. City Attorney if there was any reportable action.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no reportable action was taken in closed session.
Thank you, time for public expression, anyone wish to address us on items that are not on this evening's agenda but you'd like to bring to our attention that we can't act upon, but now would be the time to do so. Anyone? See no one, I'll close the public and turn to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I just have two very quick announcements tonight. The first one is, what does the public think of when they think of Public Works? Maybe potholes, new buildings, smart train, well, we are doing, to answer that question, we're doing an open house in our Public Works and Sanitation District on March 27th. And if anyone's ever wondered, wanted to hear more about what we do in Public Works, from pump stations to what happens when you call in a complaint or an issue, how do signs get made, all of those sorts of things, you could find out. So Wednesday, March 27th, between 9:00 and 12:00, for a guided tour of the facility and the shops, which is at 111 Morphew Street in East San Rafael. It's really an amazing breadth of what happens within a Public Works Department, so it'll be very interesting, I can assure anyone who wants to see the inner workings of a Public Works Department. Also, on April 7th, we are participating along with the, or the San Rafael Police Department is participating along with the Canal Alliance and the Urban Soccer Park and a soccer tournament, April 7th, and they're still looking for teams to join from 10:00 to 2:00 on that day. There's a low cost of $5 per team, it's middle school through high school, and I know that Chief Bishop has been lacing up her shoes and getting ready to play. I bring it up here just because I want to let people know about it, but also because it's, I think it's a great opportunity for the community to get to know our police officers and our Police Department better, and demonstrate that we, they're made up of caring human beings within our Police Department and they're a resource for all sorts of things related to the community. So we're looking forward to that community event as well, that was April 7th between 10:00 and 2:00.
Great, good, good idea, that's to be applauded. Consent calendar, items 4A through 4K. Anyone wish to hold any of the consent items? Anyone from the public wish to address us on any of the consent items before we take action on all of them together? See none? Come back for a motion with regard to the second.
May I make a motion?
Please.
Before I make the motion to approve the consent calendar, I would like to note that on it are two items that generated a fair bit of public reaction during the lead-up to their introduction at our previous council meeting, and those are H, the cannabis policy update, in which we made some ordinance change, or proposed to make ordinance changes, and the K, changing speed limits, which proposed ordinance changes as well. Both of those items are interesting items that received a full hearing then, and tonight, to the extent that no one from the public is interested in further discussion on these issues, I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
And thanks for doing so, is there a second, move to the second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm Attor Carius 5-0, turning to other agenda items, 5A, Community Development Block Grant.
Good evening, thank you. You'll notice on the dais that there is an updated Exhibit A for the resolution, and we can pull that up here on the screen, Lindsay, if we need to, just wanted to call your attention to it that that was missing in the packet, but it basically is a summary of what we're proposing for funding tonight. Okay, so background, Community Development Block Grant is a federally funded program by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. Funds are divided into three categories, housing, capital projects, and public services, and in 2017, the city and the county entered into a cooperative agreement for the management of the CDBG funding. An overview of Marin County's estimated CDBG funding for this year is about 1.4 million, and San Rafael's allocation is 415,000. Of that, it's broken down into the subcategories of public service, the housing projects, and the capital projects. We're going to start with the housing numbers first. Housing, what is being recommended tonight for your approval is 85,000 for the rehabilitation loan program with Marin Housing Authority. We have 18,000 for residential access modification for Marin Center of Independent Living, and 143,420 for artworks downtown, with the caveat, this is for their electrical work. 42,000 of this is reprogrammed money from the prior year for this applicant, for some of the upgrades to the building. Capital projects, we have recommendations for two items, we have 72,899 for the Canal Neighborhood Park and Playground improvements, and then we have another 28,500 for Marin City Health and Wellness Center. We have county staff here tonight who can talk a little bit more about that, but that is really tied to the San Rafael residents that they serve within their clinic. And lastly, our public service projects, you'll see the total down here, 15% is the maximum that we can set aside for public service, is broken down into these categories, which were also in your staff report, we have 31,833 dollars for Fair Housing Services, we have about 6100 for Domestic Violence Legal Service Family and Children's Law Center, 23,202 dollars for Legal Aid of Marin, 30,000 for Pickleweed Preschool, City of San Rafael Community Services Department, which is for a additional preschool teacher, and then we have 10,110 for University Prep by Canal Alliance, this is a new program that submitted, and then we have 8,000 for Seniors at Home, which will be administered through the JCC. So through a total of 109,245 dollars for Community Development Block Grant public service total. So Council has the ability tonight to make changes to staff recommendation, we have both Molly Cron and Gillian Zeiger here from County of Marin to answer any questions that you may have on the funding recommendations, and if you concur with staff and county recommendations, we recommend that you approve the funding resolution in your packet that is attached, and you will also see, as we mentioned before, Exhibit A, which breaks it down nicely for you. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions and also highlight Molly and Gillian in the audience.
Good thing, thank you for your report, questions? Mayor Beth.
I have a question about the preschool, Picklewood preschool, is that part of the City of San Rafael childcare program?
Yes.
Or is that separate?
Part of the childcare program.
Okay, and so how does that work? So we're paying for, this is going to fund an extra teacher?
An extra teacher in the preschool classroom at Canal Alliance, or I'm sorry, at City of San Rafael, yeah.
At City of San Rafael, and then the students do not pay fees, so that...
It actually is, it's the salary of the individual, so I can bring up Molly and Gillian, but it's the salary for the additional teacher.
Right, so shouldn't there be additional fees that then, I've not understanding why, why we need extra funding for that.
So, hi, so the fee, the salary of the teacher actually helps us subsidize the program for the students, so that, I think that would include, I think around six to 10 students would be able to attend because the teacher's salary is subsidized in that way, and the salary also includes training and materials.
Right, so what we're really doing is providing six to eight additional childcare, subsidized childcare slots, is what's happening here?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And while you're there, do you mind staying there?
Yeah, of course.
Because my question gets a little bit into the weeds, but it's also on the public service projects, so under that heading in the staff report, there is a box that lays out the six proposed recipient groups, and then below the box, there's an asterisk that indicates countywide request, and a double asterisk that says, has a balance of unspent public service funds from previous years, but has a plan in place to spend them down. The double asterisk is what I have a question about, because for the life of me, I can't find anywhere in the staff report which program or group has that double asterisk, and therefore has a plan in place to spend unspent funds from prior years and is deserving of new funds this year.
Okay, I'm not, which exhibit are you referring to? Which exhibit are you referring to?
I'm looking at the staff report.
Okay.
Under the section Public Service Projects, there's a narrative, two narrative paragraphs, and then a box, or table, rather, and the table has the six proposed recipient organizations.
Yes, I'm there.
And under that table are the, is the double asterisk.
So those, the balance of unspent funds from public service funds, so that's because the contracts were approved recently, and they are allowed to invoice for those contracts up to July of this fiscal year, and we have a, we call it a timeliness test, where those who haven't invoiced, put a plan in place with us in January to spend those funds, and a lot of time, the public service organizations are allowed to fund retroactively, so they'll go through a full service year and then fund that salaried position after the fact. So we've made sure that all of these organizations are doing just that.
Okay, so which organizations, is it all of the organizations in the table, or just some of them?
No, it's just some of them, so it's going to be Fair Housing Services, Domestic Violence Legal Services, Seniors at Home, a division of the Jewish Family Services, and Pickleweed Preschool, and several of them have actually started to invoice us since the staff report.
So you're confident then they're going to spend the funds that had previously been allocated, and this crossover is just a timing issue, it's not a request for additional monies when none are in fact needed?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think, just to clarify, it might just be an administrative piece, there are no items listed there that have double asterisks on that that refer down to that, so is that just?
Oh, that was probably just a typo, yeah.
Okay, okay. In terms of the, I believe it was the housing funds for Artworks Downtown?
Yes.
I know this has been kind of out there for, I would want to say, four, five-plus years, that they've come to request for different capital improvements to the building there, and I understand the building is old, and I understand the building needs this works, but I believe when we talked with them and the director, I want to say, four years, three or four years ago, that they had a plan for raising these funds, because they are nonprofit as well, and rather than just coming to the city as a default, you know, for these funds. Did they, in their request, and I apologize that I didn't look at the, all the details, did they put forth a funding, because that's obviously not going to fix the whole piece, how they're going to, how they're going to come about and raise the rest of that money to, you know, doing a partial electrical fix is probably not the best thing, because you'll have different, and we can talk to some electricians and firefighters about that, on what's going to be the best thing, so do they have a plan in place on how to fund the rest of this?
They're applying for multiple grants, we also have the Executive Director of Artworks in the audience tonight, if you'd like to have Elizabeth come up and address kind of their approach to how they're going to get some of these larger improvements done on the property. Currently, they have an electrical panel that's kind of the equivalent to just a restaurant for all of the artists use, all of the homes that are there, so it's a pretty significant expense, and so my understanding in talking with them is it's a combination of different funding sources, which CDBG is part of that.
Yes, Danielle's right, and they're also, I think, pursuing loans from their, from their bank and possibly other nonprofit sources.
Yeah, if they wouldn't mind. Sorry. Hi, yeah, just wanting to clarify, I know when we, when, I don't know if you were part of that conversation with...
Yeah, yeah, I think that was two years ago.
Years ago?
Just, yeah, so, thank you so much for considering this and for helping us in years past, Artworks Downtown was able to purchase our building 22 years ago through the City of San Rafael's help, we are guaranteeing our affordable housing units, which are 17 units, serving 22 people, including several children, in the heart of downtown San Rafael. As Danielle mentioned, our electrical system is grossly inadequate, we're still in knob and tube, so this is a life, health, and safety issue. What we've discovered from our original grant was that the power source that we were hoping to connect to, which would have made this project much more affordable, was actually the power source, we had originally thought with our electrical engineer that that transformer was going to be right across the street from the Artworks Downtown building, but unfortunately, PG&E has moved that space two blocks down, so what we're discovering is that the trenching and these additional costs are adding to our costs to get the work done. So what we're hoping to do is take out a few loans through the Marin Community Foundation, which are very low-interest loans based on affordable housing. Unfortunately, our core base for fundraising will not help us with this in total, and we are at a break-even spot with our revenue that we have. So we really are going to rely on Marin Community Foundation loans, the Bothan Foundation, which we're also writing a grant with them, and the Bank of Marin. So we've talked to the Community Development Block Grant folks for quite a while about making sure that this project is completed by the end of this year, which is amazing, but we've got all the mechanisms in place, an amazing electrical engineer, Susanna Van Louven, who's the project manager, and artistic lighting signed up as the contractor once that project is approved and we can move forward.
So the shortfall, according to your request and what the CDBG funds are, is about a little over $300,000, and I guess the question would be is, if those funds don't come, you know, back to Councilmember McCullough's question about the funding that's allocated in one year and carried over to the next year, you know, what's your timing on when you're going to, you know, secure the rest of this $300,000?
Well, it was a surprise tonight to find out the actual amount, I asked many times what we would expect, but they couldn't tell me, although I did see it in the city report that came through, so, but I wanted to make sure, so immediately after approval, hopefully tonight, at tonight's meeting, I will be going to my Board of Directors and letting them know the situation, that we will need to take out that loan for $300,000, and we are completely understanding of the priority of this issue, and we are prepared to do that, I think, but I have to wait until the board votes on it, but that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, as I recall, and not, I completely understand where you're coming from, but as I recall, that taking out loans was really not an option in the past because of the cash flow situation, you know...
Well, what we're hoping is from the Marin Community Foundation, is that we'll be getting such a low-interest loan, that we'll be able to extend it over a long period of time and be able to pull it together. That's the hope.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I apologize, I didn't want to interrupt, but if you could introduce yourself.
Oh, sure, I'm Elizabeth Sutton, I'm the Executive Director at Artworks Downtown, I've been with the organization for six years, I've overseen several capital improvement projects, including a roof, a sprinkler system, electrical to some degree, plumbing, 17 affordable housing units is the heart of what we do at Artworks Downtown, along with our arts programming, but our affordable housing is a big part of our programming.
Okay, did you have a question? I have one of staff first, and then perhaps of yourself. Ken, and I'm not suggesting it yet, I just want to know what the mechanics are, can we move funds that are now part of housing, capital, and public, can we move those with, within and without those categories? Or do we have to have, let's say, 246,000 within housing, as an example?
So, the only restriction that we have is that public service cannot be more than the current total, which is, I believe, 109,245 dollars. The other funds can be moved, but the minimum funds available for housing, and that includes the countywide projects, would have to be 166,025 dollars.
Okay, because quite frankly, the one I was looking at was legal aid of Marin eviction. We were in the middle of, and have had discussions here, and also more specifically privately, about our renter protection program, and twice now, I know from personal experience in dealing with legal aid of Marin, they've come to the table and they've worked hard to make an agreement with the owner, new owners of property, and without their involvement, I'm not sure what would have happened to the families that they assisted with, and I'm, I'm going to have some heartburn, short change, I'll say short change, that is less than they had requested.
So I...
And so can you help me if I, if we wanted to move some money around, because they truly have provided a good service to our community.
So thank you for that, I have some good news there, so the 30, the funding requests are actually for certain organizations, that's, so that's a countywide request, so they're requesting $30,000 countywide, so San Rafael is contributing $23,000 to that, based on our recommendations for Nevada that have already gone through Council, will have been contributing over $25,000, and then we still have our recommendations for County Other, and they're not finalized, but I can say that we hope to give them even more funding, so they're getting, they're getting a significant amount of funding. So the 23...
Is that total more than 30 that they've asked for?
It's not, it's not more than they've asked for, but it's, it will be most likely very close, if not what they asked for, and I can't say fully, because the recommendations for the County Other area haven't been made public, they're still under discussion.
But you can give us reasonable assurance that they're going to get their funding request?
Yes.
Through a combination?
Yes, and I'm really happy that you mentioned that, because I think that's one of the important aspects of their current ask for this year, the renter and tenant protections.
Okay, good. I have no questions of you, so thank you for helping with this.
Thank you so much, thank you.
I will ask for pub...
I have one question.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't think you did, go ahead.
Oh, no, actually enough for you, though, thank you, Elizabeth. Yeah, you, thank you, good running. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
So, under capital, the Marin City Health and Wellness, I think for most people, knowing that CDBG is for San Rafael, usually based organizations, can you just speak to that? I know it was kind of in the staff report, but maybe speak to why we are giving money to an agency outside of San Rafael. Of course, so the Marin City Health and Wellness Center is actually serving, it serves everyone in Marin County, it serves over 100 people who live in Nevada, it serves over 100 people a year who live in San Rafael, it also serves several homeless people as well, so those people that are residing in San Rafael, Nevada, and County Other. So we actually allocated the funding based on the percentage of people in San Rafael who use the clinic, so we're not overfunding it, we're funding it just based on how many people are currently using it. No, it's great, and then, going back to your previous answer to the mayor's question, do you think they will get additional funds, because I know, maybe this was the San Rafael portion, but now it is a countywide, this does seem one of those asks where everybody really needs to be working together to get... Yes, I agree with you, yes, so Nevada, we've asked that Nevada fund their full percentage, and they have passed that last week, and we hope that you'll fund it, and then they have reprogrammed funds from previous years for County Other that we hope to contribute, and then some additional funds from County Other, so it might not be fully funded, given the number of capital projects in County Other, but it will be very close to that, and I can also say that they are working aggressively to try to find other grant and loan opportunities, including MCF. Great, thank you.
With that, public comment with regard to this item, anyone? Close, come back, further discussion or perhaps a motion with regard to this item.
So I'll make a comment, can I make a comment?
Oh, comment, of course.
I just want to say, John, you've been serving as my successor on the CDBG committee, I'm forgetting now the actual nomenclature, but for my first few years on the Council, I did, and I know what an incredibly hard job it is, not simply picking winners and losers, or partial winners and partial losers, but also simply dealing with the fact that this is an increasingly scarce source of funding, it was maybe not twice as much money when I started eight years ago, and it's really just withered since then, and so I appreciate, I'm going to now look at the county, because I know you do a lot, all the legwork on this, really appreciate the hard work that goes into this, and I'm grateful that we're able to divert money that previously had been used, at least under the Capitol, for curb ramps, that we're now able to do things in our community that make a difference to real people, so with these very precious resources being allocated as prudently as we can, I'd be happy to make a motion unless there are other comments.
Please do.
But I move that we, I'm sorry, let me see what it is that is being asked.
Quiet.
I move that we adopt the resolution recommending CDBG project funding for the 1920 CDBG program.
Second.
Move in the second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm Attor Carius 5-0, and thank you for your comments, Andrew. 5B, Wildfire Protection Prevention Action Plan.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to start us off on that one, Chief Gray is actually ill and not able to be here tonight, but we do have our Emergency Management Coordinator Quinn Gardner, and we have a, looks like a number of people in the audience to help us out from the Fire Department if we need help, including our Deputy Chief Bob Sennett. Getting a question from the City Attorney, just to make sure that staff brought up the, in the last item on CDBG, that we needed, we showed the Exhibit A and the amended Exhibit A, just want to make sure that the motion included that.
It did, thank you.
Okay, so we have a staff presentation, I did want to, though, make two points before we start, and my first point is that I want to bring your memories back for just a moment to the two tragic devastating fires that we had in Sonoma County two years ago, and Paradise last year, in addition to lots of other wildfires around the state. Many people lost their lives and property, and I don't bring it up, because the last thing I want to do is dramatize that, I want to be extremely respectful of it, but I also want to acknowledge that that was the impetus for the planning document that you have in front of you this evening. So the City Council asked city staff, primarily our Fire Department, but also other departments show up in this plan, like our Police Department and Public Works, what we would recommend, based on the decades of experience that we have within our, primarily our Fire Department. I personally wear many hats as the City Manager, and one of those hats that the community may not be as familiar with, is that I'm the Director of the Emergency Operations Center, which is that when we have a disaster or a major emergency, it's like our Situation Room, or our area that we go to where we manage and direct resources during a disaster. So I have some amazingly talented people, like these people here to my left, there to support me, but to carry out those duties, which I take extremely seriously, I want to make sure that staff has done everything we possibly could do to prevent a wildfire and minimize any damage before it happens, and that's what this plan is really about, what we should be doing, what we can be doing more of, what are things that we're not doing right now that we should be doing to put us in even a better place, because we never know when something like that could happen in our community. So my second point is, I just want to make, be 100% clear, and I know staff to my left here is going to echo this, but we think of the plan as a starting point and not an ending point, we've been describing it, like the staff report says, as a... We've been describing it, like the staff report says, as a master plan, which means it's a set of things that staff is suggesting that we want to get feedback on from the city council if these are the things that you'd like us to continue to work on. Because absent that, we don't have a list of things that we know, yes, these are things that we want you to work on. So as we've been talking about these in your January meeting and subsequently, we've been looking for feedback as to, is this the right direction? And should we be moving forward with these sorts of things? But it's a framework. So if the council approves it, it's, it's telling us it's time to now flesh those things out in much greater detail. So just to make really clear, it doesn't, it does not contain any new rules or laws or anything like that that people must follow. In fact, nothing in the plan is set in stone or enforceable. It's a list of things that we're saying, we're checking, did we get this right? After we've done, we've, we've written it, we've gotten community input, and now we're looking for further input from you is to, is this framework, the right framework that you'd like us to pursue going forward? So if that's all it is, how's it gonna make any difference to what I brought originally about the Emergency Operations Center and how we prepare for wildfires? And my answer to that is because it allows us, it directs us, it allows us to move on and work with the community on the details and the, and each of the points that will actually end up in an ordinance or a resolution or something like that that we'll be bringing back to you after more community input. It'll also allow us to start putting time into financial resources of how much these goals should we do, could we do, and exactly how are we going to be able to fund them? So until which, until such time we know what are the things are that are in the plan, we can't tell you with any precision, you know, what overall, uh, uh, what we would recommend overall for costs and how much of it we would do and, and that sort of thing. So the, the plan is the city council directing staff to work on these things with our community. And it's similar to and very consistent with, and I think the fire staff can talk about this as well, the planning documents that the county has, like their lessons learned document, for example, which by the way, our document follows the organization exactly, that document, and has most of the same things, they have a lot in common, which is great because that means that there's a lot of collaboration between other jurisdictions, particularly the county and the city, when it comes to what are the sorts of things we should be doing as we try to prepare for wildfire. So staff thinks that this is an urgent item. We know that there's always more that can be done to clarify a plan. But we see it as urgent because we feel like the longer we work on the framework, the less time that we're spending on the actual stuff that's gonna make a difference, which is the actual policy changes and rules, regulations, those sorts of things that we're talking about in here in a more general way. But each thing in here may be a half a page or a page. When it actually comes back to you as an ordinance, it's gonna be many, many pages and spell out all the details that I think a lot of people are really hoping to see. So we're fully committed to working with the community to do that. We're a hundred percent fine, and I'm speaking on behalf of staff, modifying this plan itself that's before you tonight as many times as is needed in the coming months or coming years. If, if the council feels like we need to modify the action plan, that's fine. I know if Chief Gray were here tonight, one of the things that he would say, because I've heard him say it many times, is it's a living, breathing document that we're gonna modify as we go and make changes to. And we want to start working on creating all the details around these goals so we can bring those back to you. So I just wanted to start off by making those two points. And staff is gonna walk through the presentation. We've tried to keep it brief, but there's a lot of stuff in here. And we know that there's some people from the community that might be seeing it for the first time that hasn't been tracking it over the past few months. So we're gonna try to go through with as much speed as we can, while, while also making sure that we let people know what's in the plan. So, thank you.
Good summary, thank you very much.
Good evening. Am I driving or are you driving? Okay, um, so we want to just take a little bit of time, like Jim said, and go through, just as kind of a reminder, which has already sort of been framed. In two thousand and seven was the first ordinance adoptions where we looked at juniper and bamboo and have been working on those since. But that was very specific to the wildland urban interface. Of course, per your direction in August, we started coming up with this plan. It was supposed to be unconstrained, right? What is everything we need to be doing to prevent wildfire? And so we presented the initial draft January twenty-second, and now we're back to you today. And what we are basically asking for and recommending today is that the plan is adopted as that framework and as this living, breathing document to guide us forward so that we can start taking meaningful and additional actions. A lot that's already in the plan are things we're already doing, but we want to do it more and with community support. So also any guidance on a timeline on when you'd like to see any specific language and the details back? And just again, the acknowledgement that this is gonna be an ongoing review and process. And again, to echo what Jim said, we're not, and this plan is not a legally binding, there's no laws or ordinances specifically here. The objectives call for consideration, review, and potential development of some. And then, of course, there's no commitment of new funds through this document. So to be clear, and the intent and vision is spelled out a little bit more in the introduction into the report, but the first primary function, of course, with this was public safety and risk reduction. And what are we gonna do to keep everybody safe? And so that was really how we looked at everything we were doing and all the, the tough decisions that we've been kind of making as we go through this process. Coordination and collaboration has always been an object, an objective and an intent and something that we continually have, have done in the past and will continue to do. Some of the public feedback indicated we hadn't communicated that very clearly in this initial document. And so a lot of what we've done in the reworking of this document is make sure folks know what has been happening along those lines and what will continue to happen and hopefully expand. Some of the other feedback we had was, of course, environmental concerns, which is, of course, also in addition to property and life safety, which of course are the foundations of, again, public safety being number one. There's also a lot of environmental concerns associated with wildfire and the impact, whether it's through carbon releasing, destroying environments and habitats, actual loss of, of animals, things like that. And a lot of the public feedback was also concerned about environmental protection and sustainability of the plan. And so that's all been, again, a, a thing we've taken under consideration throughout the plan. Equity is, of course, essential. We don't want just the wealthiest of folks to be able to have a fire-safe landscape. One of the things that we've seen on a lot of these really devastating fires is that disproportional impact. And so when we go into a lot of the details of these plans, we will look at how are we gonna equitably apply these standards? And while we were kind of given the direction to create a plan unbudgeted, if you will, we do recognize there's a huge cost effectiveness we want to look at through implementation. And one of the foundations, and this is, again, if Chief Gray were here, would say, and I think we all echo the sentiments, is that it is all about voluntary compliance and incentives before wanting it to get into penalties. There's no intent in this plan or any of the potential details that may follow. They're gonna be focused on, on fees and fines for people non-complying. We really want to see this incentive and work with incentives and help people achieve, achieve a safer environment. I mentioned one of the concerns we had through feedback. So I want to address some of the main themes of feedback we had and how we've kind of incorporated some of those into the plans. And one of the biggest was, of course, the climate. Of course, the changes that we're seeing are impacting the severity of fire through drought, reduced fuel moisture, tree health issues, of course, winds, humidity, all those things. But it's really important to note that wildfires themselves also have a huge impact on the environment. And I'm gonna try to explain this the best I can. But essentially, the two thousand eight wildfire season, the pollution it released was equivalent to the pollution California produces in the year of producing enough energy for the entire state. And that is, that is huge. And so some of these actions, naturally, right, when you run a chainsaw, there's a little bit of emission that's happening. But at the end of the day, this, the efforts that would go forward in terms of this, as opposed to preventing wildfire, would be in the benefit of everything. And then, again, most of, there were some concerns in the feedback in terms of we're cutting down a lot of trees for carbon, and that's gonna have negative impacts on carbon sequestration, which will contribute to more wildfires. And we've talked a lot with our sustainability coordinator as well. And the, the proportion that we're talking about in terms of potentially having to remove will have such a little impact in that overall. And of course, looking at replanning and things like that. And Jim mentioned some of the related plans. And so just to reiterate, the climate, this is in accordance with the Climate Change Action Plan. There's actually a few places in the Climate Change Action Plan that the council city adopted last year, two years ago. Yeah, that specifically addressed those. The Marin County Wildfire Protection Plan and then the two thousand seventeen Lessons Learned Document, which was produced through a, a large group at the county level.
Just to interject really quickly, Quinn went really fast through planned updates, through all of the series of community meetings that we've had over the last couple of months. But for those that have the staff report on page four, there's twenty-five bullet points of all the things that she's been working on, that she's made changes to the plan through the past couple of months of getting community input. So I think you'll, you'll see when you go through the list of twenty-five bullets that there's been pretty substantial changes to the plan. And although Quinn said that the, you, the large majority of characterizing them would say further clarification, making sure that people understand what's, what the plan says.
We did want to take just a minute and more just to make sure everybody, anybody interested that, again, might be getting introduced to this for the first time, is, is kind of comfortable with the science, if you will, behind it. And one of the biggest emphasis here is on reducing surface fuels, which are the fuels that lay on the ground, right? A fire that starts on the ground and stays on the ground can be relatively quickly contained, depending, of course, on a lot of different factors. When we start getting into really risky behaviors, when those fuels either help the fire get into the trees and get into what we call a canopy fire, or when those fuels are a ladder between the initial source and a structure or something we're trying to protect. And then, of course, when we look at wildfire behavior and the, the triangle here kind of reflects that weather, topography, and fuel are the three biggest factors. We can't do a lot to control weather or topography. We can do some things to control fuel. And so that's why that continues to be a main focus of our, our mitigation and prevention efforts. We talk about the ignition zones throughout the plan. And just so as kind of a reminder, generally speaking, that immediate ignition zone is what's right around the structure, that zero to five feet. And then we look at the five to thirty, and then the thirty to a hundred and the extended. And these are not San Rafael unique numbers. These are standards that across NFPA, Firewise, Fire Safe Marin, all those kind of places use. One of the biggest concerns with wildfire and one of the things we do a lot throughout this plan to try to protect it is protecting structures from ember storms or ember attacks. And so there's a lot of potential vulnerabilities, and that's another theme you kind of see constantly throughout this plan. But one of the reasons I think it's so important to illustrate this is there's, there's the view of fire moving as a continuous flame front. And so if we create defensible space or create a fuel break, we can stop the fire and it won't spread. But one of the challenges we face, especially with the wind behind some of these fires, are these ember storms. And those can potentially blow embers even a mile in front of the storm, which is also one of the reasons the collaboration is so essential and so important, is we can do everything right in your neigh, in your property, in your neighborhood, in San Rafael, but we really want to continue to work with our partners because a fire that starts in any other jurisdiction has the potential to start hundreds of spot fires potentially in San Rafael through ember storms. So we have taken a lot of time since the, the January meeting for public input and want to thank the members of the community that are here this evening and that have been engaged in this process throughout it. We had over, I think it's up to about ninety online, individuals respond online through the online feedback form. We've also attended a series of meetings, including the one we presented here February eleventh. So we've really tried to get this out into the community, the community as much as possible. And it's important to note, they haven't just been presentations, they've been Q and A, they've been feedback. We've, they've really been discussions where we've gotten a lot of great feedback. We've also, these are just a couple of the meetings that we've attended. We've also had, I mentioned the online feedback form with a dedicated website sharing the plan, the plan updates, the associated documentation. We've also created some short explanation videos with our battalion chiefs highlighting certain areas of the plan that were kind of causing some confusion, next door polls, various social media. Of course, it's been mentioned in the online newsletters that go out from the city and the fire department. And then a lot of direct emails back and forth and letters from the community. It's been really great to see the engagement and a really, just on a personal note, a really great process for me to be involved with and have the opportunity to meet so many different people in the community and know that a lot of those folks are gonna stay with us and work with us as we work through some of these details of specifics with the plan moving forward. So into the specific updates that are in front of you, from a large, the updates to the organization and structure, there has been an outcome section added to each item. Essentially, what, what are we hoping to see if this objective is completed and accomplished? We've also tried to add total costs to the cost box of each item. But it's important to note, this was not an easy endeavor because there is a lot of overlap between items. Probably the most easy example is one of the, one of the items is additional staff, and that obviously impacts over half the plan. And so individual, each of those total, total cost numbers has been challenging. But we do try to kind of look at that as an individual item. So it's also important to note, and I think we mentioned this last time when we presented, but just to reiterate, when a specific item says this could be accomplished through budget adjustments or staff adjustments, that particular item could, in its entirety, we don't have that much flexibility or people or staff time or, or funds to move around to accomplish it in its entirety. At the end of the updated plan, there is what I've referred to as a crosswalk, which is what's in the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. And essentially, it's the new number and then the draft number. So if anybody wants, wants to reference the old document and compare and contrast, there is a tool within the plan to help them do that. And of course, we mentioned the reorganization, which we'll touch on as we go through. So there's some overall revisions we'll touch on. And then I am gonna run through each item fairly quickly and just touch on the big changes based on the feedback that came through it. Overall, the objectives and the intent of the plan do remain consistent. The two kind of exemptions to that. Number thirty-eight is a new item that was added specifically to clarify our intent in partnership, working with all of our other, the county, other fire departments, Fire Safe Marin, Firewise USA. There's a whole great slew of folks out there doing this work, and we want to continue that collaboration. Twenty-seven, which previously specifically called for VMPs or vegetation management plans at time of resale, has been eliminated and more or less replaced with an item that specifically addresses hardening homes, which is the physical things you can do to a structure to help prevent roofing, vents, vent coverings, things like that. So again, we've clarified that commitment to collaboration as well as the way it interfaces with some other documents to show that consistency. We've also, and I believe this was a council member kind of suggestion, what I've dubbed resilient landscape templates, which are totally, we can rename those if we want. But you'll, you'll see reference to RLTs throughout the plan, which is essentially trying to create these templates and these resources for homeowners that help them figure out how to have fire-safe landscaping, drought-resistant landscaping, carbon-sequestering landscaping, and also beautiful landscaping. And so really providing that template and those resources, and I have some images later in the presentation taken from Sonoma and some of the work they've done around that that I think we can build off of. And so largely in the plan, VMPs as they are remain kind of within that role. And we're gonna look more towards RLTs as resources for homeowners to help them achieve, achieve these concepts. We did hear a lot of feedback and kind of recognizing some of the demographics in San Rafael in terms of our rental population, that there's some challenges reaching absentee homeowners or property owners, either that only live here part-time or own a lot of property. And so when we send mailers or information out to some of those residents, they're not necessarily getting the person that's actually responsible for that landscaping. And then for most of the plan, through some feedback from specifically the Marin Association of Realtors, we've removed resale as a trigger for most things, just from a policy implementation, with the exception of shake and wood roofs, just because of that urgency. We really think that's a, a big safety risk that we want to eliminate. So here we go, item by item. So the vegetation management section focuses, as you would think, right, on vegetation management. How do we reduce the fuels to either prevent the start of a fire? So an errant cigarette or match or something like that can't start or slow the spread? A lot of it is expanding existing programs. And it's really important that a lot of these vegetation suggestions, it needs to be recognized at the community effort. And we really want to focus on things like the Firewise community with that recognition that, and we've said this over and over again, if you do everything right and your neighbor doesn't, you're still at risk. And so we really believe having that community approach can help us. And then again, just, and we'll reiterate this over and over again, the specific details of a lot of these policies, procedures, et cetera, will be developed in the coming months with additional public input and additional input from, from the council. So number one, which was number one, and so I have included draft number as I go through the presentation, if, if that helps anyone, depending on what plan you have in front of you, was to eliminate highly flammable vegetation. This has been adjusted, and that, that was specifically adding acacia and Italian cypress to the ordinances that exist, which already include bamboo and juniper, as well as applying those to the entire city. We've specified that it will be within a certain distance of structures, not necessarily, we recognize the idea of going into a five-acre plot and pulling out a juniper tree in the middle of it is, is not realistic. But we do want to try to eliminate those highly flammable vegetation from within area of structures as well as roadways. And then per public input, and again, valued public input, we've added the scientific names to those species. And we've also talked about addressing point of sales, which is how I've kind of dubbed things like nurseries, landscape, things like that. And so what outreach education or potentially restrictions do we want to put on what's sold or at least educating at the point of sale? And throughout the plan, the point of sale has been added in multiple places. Number two, which was applying defensible space standards citywide. Again, currently, defensible space really only applies to the woo-ee. And again, because of the way- And again, because of the way embers work and because of the way wildfires spreading, we do want to have defensible space standards across the whole city. Per public input, we have looked at adding additional language to include eucalyptus within those guidelines, as well as the need to look at the current hillside ordinance the city has, which gets at when you're building in new space, the percentage of land you can disturb, which can also make it difficult to achieve defensible space. So we know we need to do some looking at those ordinances to see what kind of things might need to change. Number three is perhaps the item that has gotten the most attention. And I will try to use some of Chief Gray's language here in terms of, we don't want to create a moonscape or a draconian world, I believe is what he says. But what we do want to look at doing is creating a set of standards that really explains vegetation within that immediate area around the home or structure, which is usually, we're thinking five feet, but some of that's going to vary based on the specifics of the structure, construction materials, slope, all of those kinds of things. So we do offer RLTs as an exemption. And I think one of the important things to note there is that also helps and protects the property owner so that if a new fire chief or a new inspector comes along and says, actually, you can't have that, they've got a plan that has been approved, that was vetted, and as long as they're maintaining the landscape in this way that was believed to be fire safe, they can work through that process hopefully a little easier. So again, really an emphasis on those individual prescriptions and wanting to be able to go out and help more homeowners through, whether it's templates, individual inspections or things like that. And the other important point here is recognizing that a lot of San Rafael isn't necessarily multi-acre plots, but a lot of homes really close together. And so if everybody starts at their structure and works out, we can make the whole community a lot safer just within that five foot zone. Because then any ember potentially landing within that five feet isn't going to catch that shrub or bush or, or dead debris on fire, which won't catch the house, which will eliminate additional embers from spreading. So again, that, that community emphasis. Four is goat grazing, goat grazing, perhaps not surprisingly at all, the feedback has been overwhelmingly positive on this and folks love the idea of expanding this. One of the things that did get clarified in the update was just really looking at those partnerships. The biggest, one of the biggest individual expenses with goat grazing is transporting them. So if we have ways where we can just naturally let them roam, maybe between city open space, HOA owned land, and then back to city open space, we want to look at what those partnerships and MOU and agreements could look like to reduce overall costs, but also create continuous fuel breaks. Fuel interruption zones, and some of the feedback here again, was more of a clarification point. Fuel interruption zones do not necessarily mean clearing 100 feet down to bare mineral soil with no vegetation. So there's a clarification on the emphasis of shaded fuel breaks, which this is one in progress. So again, you're removing those ground fuels and those, or surface fuels, excuse me, and ladder fuels, so that there's really nowhere for fire to go, and then you can maintain a beautiful shaded fuel break. This is also great for forest health as well. Six is just outreach and education. And so we just expanded this to make sure we were including our partners at Fire Safe Marin. And they've just put out a new campaign fairly recently that's living with wildfire, which I think is a really poignant phrase to recognize the situation we're in and how are we going to live with wildfire? So again, adds points of sale is one of the big updates that happened here, as well as some more information on how to dispose of different types of vegetative debris. I actually recently learned that bamboo, for example, is not treated necessarily the same as juniper or some other vegetation. And so we want to make sure we're educating everybody about that. Seven, establish more Firewise communities. Again, fairly unsurprisingly, this was overall really positive feedback. And even since, which is a great win for us, right, since January, we've had other communities reach out to us and ask about how to become Firewise. And so we're in the process of working with those communities and certainly hope to have more. And this also includes working with Fire Safe Marin with insurance companies. And that was a big point of feedback is what are we doing with insurance companies? And we certainly want to continue those discussions, support them in their efforts to advocate for more conversations and hopefully breaks, or at least maintaining insurance rather than potentially losing it. Eight, not much feedback at all on here, and this was reducing hazardous fuels through the abatement process. The big one here is that it also includes potentially improved plots or areas near structures, as well as roads. Nine is the coordination of the actual removal of the, of the vegetation. So we've already had some more conversations with some of our partners in this regard. And we do want to do a lot of outreach around, is everybody already filling up their green carts, right? Now's the perfect time. If you're not using that resource you have, little by little, you can work your way and really reduce costs. And so we want to make sure we're doing a lot of outreach along those lines. 10 and 11 are the volunteer ones, if you will. Since January, we've also had people volunteer to help us pull broom and do other work. So some of these are, you know, moving along already quite nicely. We did incorporate volunteer groups broader than just CERT into the update. And then actually, on number 10 specifically looked at, we originally were just going to use CERT to help with outreach and, and things like that. But a lot of them said, we want to get out there and pull broom and do things like that too. So we said, okay, and we added it into the update. For 12, this is the review and update of the wooie map. Some of the requests were for some estimates. The map here with the dots is actually our inspection map from 18, just again, to kind of emphasize, but the red is the current wooie. And there's certainly some interesting pockets that aren't necessarily logical. And we always get the comment from, you know, why, why am I in a wooie and my neighbor across the street isn't? So some of it, we're, we'll look at these updates. Again, this will go through additional input, hopefully with an advisory committee and all those kinds of things. But those are kind of the rough estimates that we, at least in our initial, a very initial draft we're looking at. 13, which is public resource code 4290 and 91. This is essentially creating defensible space standards citywide. And so one of the big changes with the update plan is not necessarily specifically saying we should adopt it, but rather we should consider it. But depending on some of how the details with some of the other potential changes happen, it may or may not be necessary. So we scaled that back a little bit. 14, which is getting at new resources. This goes to the broader conversation, but we, you know, wanted to clarify the intent and really focus on the idea of reducing financial burden to anybody that couldn't do it and what other resources we might be able to help them with. And so certainly the income piece of this is part of it, but also partnerships, volunteer groups, various Cal Fire, things like that. 15 gets at the ignition sources for encampments, and that is more or less unchanged. The biggest is just some language in here that clarifies just kind of that navigating current case law like Martin, Martin versus Boise, with the continual need to look at how we can try to reduce encampments and the potential, potential ignition, ignition threat in open space. So we're going to move on to the second section, which is the wildfire prevention and protection. A lot of this gets at how we're going to prevent the ignitions, as well as limiting spread and impact and assuring a safe response. 16 is reducing the likelihood of ignition. This is essentially updating and clarifying that there should be no smoking in city open space year round. But we also had some conversations with our friends at, literally friends of China Camp, and looking at some ways we can work with them to prevent these ignitions as well. 17 is looking at code, Fire Code Chapter 7A, which is the Fire Code chapter that looks at building materials and their fire rating. And so to clarify this, which has certainly caused a couple, some questions via the feedback form, is not necessarily anything being a retrofit, but the simplest way I can explain it is what we're proposing is any new building material coming into San Rafael would meet current fire, would be fire rated. So if, if you're redoing, whatever you're redoing, the material coming in, we want it to be as fire resistant as possible.
It's actually the building code, it's the California Building Code Chapter 7A.
So 18 is the shake and wooden roofs. We have done a rough estimate at this point and think it's probably around the 150 mark, maybe up to 200, but somewhere in there in terms of eliminating those. And this is more or less unchanged, with the exception of kind of the acknowledgement that the details of the actual changes that may go forward would need to allow for things like escrow and not slow down home sales, but also still using that as an opportunity to work through. One of the concerns here is you don't want necessarily someone purchasing a new home with a wooden roof without the knowledge that they're going to have to replace that. And so at a minimum, we want to look at disclosures so they have that information. 19 is the hazardous vegetation study. And this is called for within some of the other documents we mentioned, like the lessons learned and I believe the CWPP as well. And Chief Weber at a meeting last week mentioned it as well, that the, the county has done these broad-based studies, but that really is on municipalities to look at it at a more localized parcel by parcel level. And this does add some additional language along eucalyptus groves. 20 is the strategic fuel breaks in the fire roads. So again, really just clarifying the intent isn't deforestation, but really looking at forest thinning, reducing ground fuels, shaded fuel breaks, and recognizing kind of that value of recreation, the recreational value there. We've also had a lot of folks kind of commenting on fire roads in that regard. 21 is the new item, if you will, that specifically mentions hardening your homes. We already do a lot of outreach along these lines, but we want to look at how we can expand that and help more people have the information, resources they need to harden their homes. 22 is the VMPs, which now adds the RLT or the resilient landscape template. And this is just an example of, I mentioned from the Sonoma drought resistant website that they use. But we want to make, we want to make both of these resources better aligned, better with the county. The county's also working on updating their VMP process. And keeping in mind that it's not just, not just drought resistant, not just fire resistant, but how do we really create landscaping that is beautiful, but also kind of meets the changing environmental need? Another example, and this gets a little more of the details, and this again, is just focused on drought, but I think they provide a great starting template that we can kind of look at and roll off of. And I think these are fairly easy to understand and visualize in terms of how you can make your landscape beautiful. So 23, which was increasing the number of VMPs and RLTs. So we, the best way, the way this has kind of changed the most is just to clarify, clarify VMPs really kind of staying in the realm that they're in, but using RLTs as really a resource for homeowners. 24 is the sign improvement. I don't think there was a single comment there. And it, but it remains something that's important to make sure folks know when they're entering areas of high fire risk. And that we can also use those signs to potentially provide additional information on extra high fire danger and things like that, depending on weather. 25 is the short-term rentals, probably the most significant, two significant changes here was one, the suggestion to directly coordinate with the platform, so VBRO, Airbnb, et cetera. And that it's apparently fairly easy to get them to put a general safety message within zip codes and things like that. And so we can be providing information to anybody booking that way. Great public feedback on that, as well as making sure that we're aligning kind of this initiative with recently, of course, staff was before you talking about short-term rentals. And so as they move forward in their process, we'll make sure we align these safety recommendations as well. 26 is the additional staff for vegetation and per recommendation, I believe from council last meeting, to really look at not just vegetation specialists per se, but folks that can really look at disaster mitigation and disaster preparedness as, as a whole. Anytime we have that opportunity to interface with people, we should also be double checking that everyone signed up for emergency alerts and things like that. And so certainly wanting to get, get additional staff, but also make sure those staff have a broader set of, of skills and ability to support the whole effort. And I should add, which is a significant change, it does actually include a request for three seasonal employees, at least to help us get over that. So it is actually a higher level of additional staffing that we believe we need based on this plan. The increasing the police ranger staffing, the significant change here is it's also incorporating evacuation planning. We've gotten some requests from the community in terms of additional evacuation planning or drills. And so they're a great resource for that and we want to support our police department as they support this effort. Last section is notifications and evacuations. I think that goes without explanation in terms of what's included here. So 28 is reducing fuels along the roadways. And of course, the big focus there is if you have fuels right along the roadways and, and they're on fire, people can't use those roadways and therefore have no egress, or we potentially have no access. The big feedback we had here was again, this, this concern that we were going to be clear cutting. A lot of folks wanting to make sure we were maintaining our Tree Status USA, which of course we do, and we'll work responsibly to do that. 29 is the hillside parking box program. So some images from, from Larkspur and Mill Valley in terms of how this can look. So one of the big clarification points here is those parking boxes aren't specific to one vehicle. It really is the length of the available space that it's safe. That whole area can be marked off and, and the neighbors can, can adjust and, and fit in as they can. This also, the item also now includes some language in terms of how we might be able to support property owners trying to produce off-street parking. So a way to get more vehicles off the road and if there's anything we can do to help them through that process or ease it for them. 30 is the public alerting and capabilities, and of course, this is the policy. We did get a decent amount of feedback specifically asking about outdoor sirens. And I just want to take the opportunity because I'm sure it'll be a question or a comment. Outdoor warning sirens are designed to be heard outside. Some of the feedback we had was, can you use sirens to wake me up? And the answer is they're not designed and they probably won't do that unless you're a very light sleeper and your windows are open. So it's really important that we look at some of these other types of notifications. So that includes the NOAA weather radios, which I know Chief Gray talked about last time. And the item also now includes some more language about traditional media, how we're going to work with newspapers and radio and make sure they're kind of in our initial contacts if, if a fire's significant, as well as peer-to-peer communication and, and building off NRGs or neighborhood response groups. And so we really believe getting neighborhoods through CERT and neighborhood response groups to know, maybe you get the alert on your phone, but you're going to take the responsibility to go knock on your neighbor's door because they're hard of hearing and sleep with their hearing aid off and need you to help them wake up. And so trying to build off the feedback we got, but again, the sirens aren't necessarily what people think they are. 31, early fire warnings and detections. This is ongoing, continuing efforts to install a few new cameras in San Rafael. It is worth noting, these are, these will be monitored by the same folks that already monitor the cameras, so there's no additional staffing need there. And then also working with NOAA, which is the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration, to make sure that again, they're kind of one of our first calls, because they can then set off those alerts onto those NOAA weather radios that people can have. 32 is the review and expansion of the evacuation plans, which includes area of refuge and then supporting neighborhood evacuation drills. So the language supporting a neighborhood evacuation drills is new. And just want to make sure that we're clarifying the inclusion for planning with access and functional needs. We of course have a lot of care facilities throughout San Rafael and need to consider their needs for evacuation. And then I believe it was Mill Valley recently released some mapping that actually indicated areas of refuge or potential, potential safety areas. And we think that's a great way that we can kind of move forward as well with helping people understand it's not necessarily about outrunning the fire. It's about getting somewhere that you can be safe while the fire is either contained or burns past you. And then another great recommendation that, that came from the public, I believe, was doing some more work with some of the technology providers ahead of time so that they could help in those events. 33, this has kind of been expanded to get it safe and resilient critical infrastructure. So it broadens it beyond just vegetation around it, but also working on redundancies. A lot of the concerns I hear a lot are, well, if the power's out or my, or my, or the cell phone tower's down, things like that. And so what can we do to advocate for more redundancies within our critical infrastructure as well as protecting them? And so roadways are of course added here. 34 and 35, no real updates here. The efforts are ongoing and this is really some internal communication and making sure that we're, making sure staff can internally communicate and messages needed. 37, 36 and 37, excuse me, and this is the gates and the garage doors. Not a lot of change here. Some of the feedback was, well, if you can manually open your garage, why do you need a power backup? Well, again, the retrofit, the, the updated law is only applying to new or replaced. But we think that there's a lot of public education that we can do around that. Also because folks that might not physically be able to lift their garage door, or in some cases even reach the red pull string, maybe your vehicle's high and you can't physically get to it. And so we want to make sure people are at least thinking about those things, if my power's out, how would I get out of my garage? And lastly, 38, which again, is the item that was added to specifically clarify the coordination and collaboration with a lot of the partners listed here. Again, building off these existing partnerships is, it's a new item, but it is not a new initiative by any stretch, and it's something that we'll continue to build off of. So that, that's the updates in the plan and the structure. And then of course, here's the website with the plan and we'll post the updated PowerPoint and the updated plan's already there. And I will be updating the feedback form to reflect the updated numbers with, with the approval, if that's how we decide to keep this numbered. And then we will continue to gather feedback as we move forward the details of this process.
Well, first, thank you not only for this evening's presentation, I think you did an excellent job, but for the accomplishments since back in August, when this first started, started working on it. So thank you for that complete, I would suggest rendition, which includes obviously a lot of public input. I'd probably gone to six or so. I'd probably gone to six or so. And the presentations, maybe more. But any case, the presentations by, by you Quinn and certainly the chief have been excellent. So I want to thank you publicly for, for all the work you've done and certainly the involvement to include the, the public in this. Having said that, questions of staff? Questions?
Actually, I've got a number of questions slash comments, but what I'd like to do is hold them for now because I'm very interested in hearing what some of the members of the public who've come here to speak tonight have to share with us. And then we can react to that. I, I trust you will too, Quinn, but thank you for the presentation.
Kate? Open public comment. Please come forward. Just a free-for-all, you know, just get in line. If you would introduce yourselves, and you are on tape, so smile.
Okay, thanks. My name is Gene Lakeo. I'm the president of the Marin Association of Realtors. And I want to say, first of all, I was very impressed with this plan. I did not realize the comprehensive amount of work that went into it. But as I learned about it, the lessons learned report, the report to the board of supervisors, the informational report to the council, as well as the fire research. Also, I want to thank Quinn for taking the time to meet with us and help us understand this. I think it's a good plan and we support it basically. I also want to acknowledge that the draft change has ameliorated some of the point-of-sale issues that were concerning us, and we appreciate that. Thank you. At the same time, we still have a concern about maybe requiring homeowners to replace their roofs when they try to sell their homes. That's going to be a complicated and financial impact to each of the homeowners and maybe a hardship for some of them. And I'm sorry, I'm watching your green light here. The plan notes that the timeline to 2029 was chosen to provide 10-year timeframe to ameliorate the financial impact. But at the same time, it's potentially going to require a homeowner trying to sell their home with replacing the roof immediately. They're going to have two months or three months or six months. They're not going to have 10 years. And also, home sales are very random in nature. We don't know which homes are going to sell this month, this year, next year. Maybe all the wood shake roofs will sell in 10 years and all the tile roofs will sell next year. It's just not a very effective approach. So we're suggesting that you apply this. I noticed you had on your intent equity. And, and rather than having homeowners that are selling their homes have this, uh-oh.
Please finish your sentence.
Okay, thank you. We, we would suggest that maybe you have a timeline that applies to everybody. And maybe it could even be laddered in terms of riskier neighborhoods have shorter timelines and more, and so for example, if it's a risky neighborhood in terms of the topography and geography, maybe it should be six years or five years. And if it's a safer neighborhood, maybe it could be to 10 years. And in any case, it would apply to all of the, all of the residents equally. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment. I did have an opportunity, and I don't know if that person is going to speak or not, but have an opportunity to talk with one of your representatives as well. And we talked a little bit about that. And I'm not sure we're exactly in the right place yet, but it's a point of consideration certainly.
Well, it's a good plan and we thank Quinn also.
And we thank you for, for your comments certainly. Yes, sir. No particular orders, just line up and approach.
Hello, my name is Kelly London, President of Lockloman Homeowners Association. I'm just going to say ditto to all the kudos because I'm here to talk about money. Before the residents of San Rafael are asked for additional parcel taxes and the long-term cost of additional staffing, the city needs to identify the basic fire services covered by our current tax burdens. Residents need to know why maintenance of our fire roads has been neglected for so many years that many are impassable, eroded and non-existent. We need, we need to know what fuel reduction projects have been completed already in Henry Barbier Park, CSA 19 and the LRA above our neighborhoods. We need to know that every possible grant and bond opportunity, such as those for sudden death diagnosed in China Camp and State Measure 68 are being pursued in cooperation with the state, county and other entities with proven track records, such as Fire Safe Marin. We need to know why $436,000 plus of Measure A funds are being used for playground redesign and equipment this fiscal year rather than fire safety issues. The city of San Rafael and its taxpayers have volunteered to costly boondoggles in the past. Rock and Roll Museum, Marin History Museum. And I, I want to point out one that we may be facing right now, which is a large, new, very expensive library community center that I think may not be necessary. I think we need to look at whether or not we can repurpose underutilized properties like Boyd House and Falkirk for library purposes. And maybe take it to the voters to find funding. Because without funding, you're asking, all due respect to Jim Schutz, let's pass this and then we'll find out what's in it. Let's pass this and then we'll find out how to fund it. I'd really like to see a deep dive into the funding possibilities before this is passed. And maybe there could be some kind of working group that includes people who are really interested in how we could fund long-term staffing requests in this program. Thank you.
And thank you. And I am going to ask Jim, our city manager, to, to repeat, if you would, the sort of the cycle or where we're at and where we're going with this. Because you've incorporated some thoughts that we intend to put in place, but that's not the purpose of tonight's agenda item. Yeah, if you could, let's just clear the air on it.
So what staff's recommending tonight is the, the action plan itself, which is, like I mentioned before, the, the framework of a number of different items. So for example, one thing that's come up already is shake roofs. There's a one page on here that says, would you like to see an ordinance on shake roofs? Some of my early ideas are that maybe that we give people 10 years. Maybe it's done at the time of resale. No real specifics in there, right? So there's nothing from this plan that would require anything, anybody to do anything differently with their shake roof, today, tomorrow, the day after that. In order for that to happen, we would need to create a municipal code change or an ordinance that says, here's what the new rules around shake roofs would be. We would do that by working with the community and saying, hey, does this 10 years make sense to you? Should it be 20? Should it be five? Do we want to do it during resale or is there a different way to do it? And then we would have to bring that back to the city council in order for it to get approved. On the costing, we've put to the best of our ability how much we think each of the goals could cost on a range. What's difficult about that is, is that a lot of them are things that you could do more or less of depending on whether you had really adequate funding to do it. So on some things right now, we can do with the current amount of funding that we have to a limited level. But if we had additional funds, we could actually do it and make it a difference so that it's going to be meaningful to the community. So, but we don't know if you're interested in these 38 things or not. So I don't know which ones necessarily to go out and cost further. Also, the costing will change as we work with the community on it. So for example, if we, if, if we, if we, if we think that something may end up with a particular ordinance, but we're working with the community and there's modifications and it's different, it may have a different cost at the end of the day. So some of the things will kind of evolve as they develop. There isn't anything in here, I think it was item 14 Quinn, you were talking about, of different funding sources. We apply for every possible grant we could possibly apply for. And there are other, other ways to fund some of these things. There isn't anything in here that talks about a parcel tax. That talks about taxes as a, as a way to fund these things, but those would all need to be subsequent conversations.
I, I think he's missing my point. My point is what we're asking in my community is for a prioritization that says, this is what we're going to do first and this is what we're going to dedicate the funds we have to. Namely, it's now number 20 instead of number 14, which are the strategic fire breaks, which are identified in every after-action report from the 2003 fires on forward. And asking for that prioritization so we know where current funding is going. Having a voice in, okay, Victor Jones is a great little gem, but you know, it's right in, in a ravine where a fire would kill children. So what are our priorities here? And where are we going to get the money to accomplish them? We need a deeper dive on the municipal level.
And I think what, I think what Jim is suggesting is that this is the first of many steps that'll provide.
The problem is it says hiring. So if you're going to pass a resolution that involves hiring five, even if they're seasonable, three, three staff members and two more policemen, that's a funding issue.
Oh, yeah, no, we, we recognize that. Thank you. I can't get into too much back and forth here. It gets a little awkward, so I'm, I'm sorry about that. I love to go back and forth a little more than we are. Next person, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips and council members. It's my pleasure to address you tonight. My name is Sandra Salinger. I've lived in the city and the county for 40 years. And there are two things I'd like to address in this proposal. One, under vegetable, vegetable, vegetation management. Think if we didn't have Scotch broom in our hills. Wouldn't that be nice? Yet this program doesn't address it specifically. Under vegetation management, under the first thing, there are many plants called out, but Scotch broom or Cystescoparium is not listed. And it's assumption on somebody's part that because it's in our hills, it isn't being picked up and planted in our, in our yards. It may not be in our nurseries that readily, readily available, but they can bring it in. So I'd like to see Scotch broom brought into that first line. And certainly you agree that it's a scourge to our wildlands. And in the last sentence, it says to consider a potential ban on certain plants. And it doesn't call out specific plants. It's just assumed that they're going to be the ones that are listed. And I would really emphasize that in this sentence, you use Scotch broom as an example. Secondly, I see that you're going to have to replace people sitting on the design review plan. Can I continue?
Yeah, please do. I, I, yeah, please do. I don't understand your point, so please do.
So when you're considering somebody on the design review plan, the person who knew a lot about vegetation is retiring. And so I would propose that you put into the description of somebody who sits on that design review plan, a, an arborist. And they would be identified to look at the plans and go out to the site or be knowledgeable of the site so that trees are not planted under high power lines. And that's not happening now. It, it could be done by the city treatment, tree department. However, that might increase wages. But that, we know that trees are a potential problem with the, under being high power lines. And that the city contracts with PG&E to, to top the trees. But there are new trees that are being planted under high power lines. And we have to have a point of stopping.
And your, your point's well taken and thank you for providing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, you too. Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Hunterman. I've lived in San Rafael my entire life. My wife and I now live ground zero. We have an 800-foot border with Falkirk's open space. I have pretty much seen every wildfire around. I could probably tell the fire department exactly where the fire is going to go. However, I really appreciate all the work that you're doing, you know, because to me, open space is where all the fires start. I have yet to see a fire start in a neighborhood. My biggest question is with the five feet planting, removing all vegetation five feet from a home and replacing it with grass or succulents. I know Pam Nicolai, who I suggested that to, who was the former MMWD, she almost fainted. She said, did you talk to the water district about that? So, but my, my biggest thing is looking at this house right there. What you really should do is put Sun Valley in there or Glenwood in there. And most of the homes are only five feet apart. And you remove all that vegetation, you remove their privacy. We own the West End Nursery. It's been in our family for 110 years. Initially, when the juniper, you know, removing all the fire plants, you would not believe how mad people were and how they took the fire department's name in vain and a lot of other things. I have no, you know, qualms with removing plants that, you know, are in fire. I worked with the Marin County Fire Department for years developing their CD. And I, I totally understand removing those. But the biggest thing that we have, when people come in, is they say, give me one more minute. They say, I don't want to see my neighbor. I don't want to see him staring down from his house up above, looking at me. I would like to have some sound, you know, barrier. And you remove all the plants within that area, it's going to be a really sad city. I know driving from my, down from, back from Davidson, where my grandson's baseball game, I'm driving back down Woodland and down that way, and I'm thinking to myself, you remove all these tree, all these plants? What is, what's going to happen? You know, people are not going to have privacy. And the real firestorm is going to be people upset with that. I know everybody is super concerned with fire. And believe me, I am. I'm, the fire right up there, that was like 50 feet from our house. So I totally get it. But I think you need to, you know, to look at that. And as I say, I would be more than happy, you know, to, you know, if the fire department, you know, give them some ideas. Because believe me, I've been in vegetation, we, the nursery's been in our family for 110 years and we do know a little bit about plants. And so I think that's the biggest problem you're going to have. Because I, people don't want fires. I mean, I totally get it. But people also feel that, you know, they have to have some privacy. And, and so that was all I wanted to say.
So I'll, I'll put you on notice.
Yeah.
We are going to form a committee to refine this further and go out and talk more with the community.
I would be happy to.
We do have your name.
I would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Because as I say, I, you know, I've grown up in San Rafael and I love San Rafael and, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing, especially you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thanks on behalf of the community for your involvement. Next person, yes?
Hi, I'm Paul Manault with the Dominican Firewise Committee. And I'm very supportive of the program. Some have made extensive comments. But there's still one disconnect that I just want to bring your attention to. And I know that our fire folks are aware of it. This has to do with the ember, I call them amber blizzards. To me, that's a little better term, growing up in snow country than storm. You know, they, they discovered that in the Sonoma fires along the Fountain Grove Parkway, where they had the homes that were built in the 90s for the doctors, stuck over tile roofs, that those homes burned from the inside out because the embers blew through the vents, as we all know. And in our plan right now, we don't really have any mandates for home hardening. I know you're going to try to make that voluntary. But there are some things that I've done to the house I live in that I think are very simple. I've done them myself. One is to retrofit the vents on the house at the basement level, the eve level and on the roof level with eighth inch or even 16th inch wire mesh. To cover the gutters, I have, if you have plastic gutters, some houses do, you need to replace them with metal ones, obviously. And if you have metal gutters, then you need to cover them, at least with mesh or I think even preferable is, there's several systems where you basically install a four-foot-long aluminum plate over your gutter. And then there's just like a very small little eighth-inch gap that the water goes into and all the other junk goes off, goes on the ground. gap that the water goes into and all the other junk goes off, goes on the ground. And in my comments, I suggested that the city provide a deadline of, whatever, take your pick, but I said two or three years for people to do that, and then to have their contractor or handyman certify the work to the city, so the city doesn't have to get up there with a ladder, look in the gutter, and see what happened. It's a very simple process, but I think some, on some of these things, we really need to knuckle down on people, and the city has to take the heat. There are going to be people who are not happy with that kind of requirement. But bottom line is, houses that aren't prepared are public nuisances. And folks, you got to step up and face the music. If your house isn't ready, it's a nuisance to your neighbors. Thank you.
And I'll just pass on to you. I was going through a bunch of stuff today, including your letter. You probably can't see my comment to the right, to the left, but it says good. Good job. Thank you for preparing this and sending it on to us.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, welcome again.
Mayor Phillips, members of council, my name is Romeo Arieta. I'm the CEO of the Marin Association of Realtors, representing over fourteen hundred realtors in Marin County. I would like to start by thanking you and staff for taking this leadership role in developing this ambitious proposal to overhaul the wild safety action, the wildfire safety action plan, which represents an update to local regulations that will go a long way towards keeping our entire community safe. San Rafael's proposed wildfire safety action plan is a great start towards a safer community. MAR welcomes the opportunity to work collaboratively with the city council and the mayor's office to improve the plan and to make it one that keeps all members of the San Rafael, San Rafael community safe. We would like to participate in any sort of advisory group. And lastly, we welcome opportunities to support educating or training. For example, we would love to partner or help promote Firewise or other similar projects, and just wanted to state that we're a willing partner in educating the public.
And thanks for coming in the other day and chatting.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next person? Brighi, long time no see.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Quinn, and members of the council. As you know from our prior discussions, I believe that the proposal before you to adopt this resolution is premature. You've heard from a number of homeowner associations by letter, as well as from myself, both in writing and in our meetings, that this plan has a lot of duplication, a lot of issues in it with respect to the organization of it or the reorganization. This plan was only made, the current plan was only made available for public review starting last Wednesday. The plan that was submitted last Wednesday, this revised plan, makes certain new recommendations, deletes other recommendations, randomly jumbled the recommendations that were previously made and renumbered them, making the public's ability to actually absorb this new plan rather difficult. So coming in and asking with just really two days to adopt this resolution, I think is premature. One of the points I thought is an excellent one in the plan is that implementation of the plan, and I'm quoting, "will require public support and compliance." Rushing this resolution to adopt this plan does not move the ball forward for gaining public support and compliance. Turning to the plan itself, as I've pointed out to the, to you, Mr. Mayor, and to the fire department, there is a disconnect between what the plan's propose is, proposal is, which is fire prevention and keeping fire from reaching our neighborhoods versus fire mitigation. And the majority of this plan focuses on fire mitigation once it reaches our neighborhoods. I believe the focus should shift to that, to fire prevention. Just nine out of the thirty-eight proposals addresses fire prevention. That's less than a quarter of it. I think at the end of the day, you've heard that people are willing to work with the city, are anxious to work with the city. But putting this in perspective, CAL FIRE came out with a report in February, February twenty-second. It listed the thirty-five most at-risk communities for wildfire in California. None of the communities in San Rafael were on that list. San Rafael is not on the list of the communities at greatest risk. That gives us, I'm not suggesting a lot of time, but it does give us time to take this back, to workshop it, and to make this plan better. Thank you.
Thank you. And frankly, I'm not the mayor of the other thirty-eight, so, you know, let's get real. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bill Carnish of Sustainable San Rafael. Thank you for all the good work on this. The key to success here is that we need to reduce both the immediate climate impacts of intensifying wildfires, at the same time that we reduce the core causes of climate change that's fueling these impacts. That means pulling carbon out of the air instead of releasing carbon into the air. Both vegetation and buildings can help do that, and this plan offers opportunities to improve both. For example, number one, encourage healthy yards and open spaces, so they're less likely to burn and more able to capture carbon in healthy plants and soils. This means a comprehensive approach to the numerous vegetation management strategies suggested in the plan, combining the expertise of the fire department with the ecological knowledge of our Parks Division and others around the county. Number two, assure that plant debris is properly returned to the soil through the green cart composting and other programs of Marin sanitary. The all-out fuel reduction efforts suggested by the plan presents a huge opportunity to return, return carbon to the land instead of overburdening our landfills with methane-releasing plant material in partnership with programs like Marin Carbon Project and others, Drawdown Marin and others. Thirdly, concentrate on making buildings safe and making them energy efficient. Recent firestorms in California have shown that structures, once they're ignited themselves, become the primary fuel for wildfire. The plan's call for hardened homes should be, should receive at least the attention given to vegetation management in the near term, as suggested by the Realtors Association, and I would say also a time of sale. Why not both? Fire-safe home requirements should be coupled with vegetation management plans and with carbon-reducing energy efficiency plans and incentives like those offered by many programs around the county. So we need to advance both our climate action plans as well as guarding our community from these severe climate impacts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Any, yes, hi.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips and members of the city council. I'm Bonnie Marmar, and I am here on behalf of the Point San Pedro Road Coalition, which I'm a board member, and also on behalf of the Point San Pedro Road Coalition's Disaster Preparedness Committee, on which I serve, and which I started about fifteen years ago, at which time folks were interested in getting the neighborhoods along the Point San Pedro Road organized, as they are now interested, and there's always renewed, every time there's a disaster. In two thousand and four, when we started that committee, it was a tsunami across the world in Thailand, and it was at that time I learned that there had been damage right here in San Rafael at Laklomen Marina from a tsunami. And folks were fascinated by that and said, "Wow, we need to prepare for earthquake, fire, and tsunamis, apparently, and we've been trying to find answers." This plan goes a long way toward preparing us in the event of wildfires, and we've all certainly learned the importance of it. The Santa Rosa Fire started just a stone's throw away, the first fire that night from my family home where my daughter now lives, and that was where wires came down and burned a couple of homes right down the street. So for me, I have a lot of concerns still that not only is this comprehensive plan a great plan, but I want to be sure that my neighbors and the folks in all the HOAs and all the individuals and all the, all the folks support it. And so I reached out and tried to pull people together and asked for representatives of the different homeowners' associations to weigh in, to meet, to collaborate, and we had a meeting. And just after that, there were changes in the plan on which folks have not really been able to weigh in. I think people are interested, they want to, and I think out of respect for what obviously still has to come, people didn't get into the weeds, they want an opportunity to do that. I just note that your staff report recommended that you adopt it, but it didn't really give you an option to adopt it as a framework, using that word and making sure that people know that this is not something, if you must adopt it tonight, which we encourage you to delay, just so people will feel, you know, confident that they've had a chance to review what really is being considered tonight since the updated plan is so new. So a brief, a brief delay in doing that will, I think, bring a lot more support from the community, answer a lot of questions for folks. But if it should be adopted tonight, I think it's partly an issue of people understanding that this is solely a framework and not a plan per se, so I'd ask you to consider those comments.
And that's a really good point, and you'll notice that the resolution does talk about framework.
Well, in the language that I saw in the staff report, it didn't, the actual, it's a adopt, I thought, adopt, reject, tell everybody to come back with something new. Anyway, I did not see it in the actual language.
We'll ask the city manager to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any, excuse me, anybody else? Hi.
My name is Belle Cole, and I'm with Organizing for Action in Marin and other groups. And I, I'm here to support the, the letter that Bill Carney submitted to you from Sustainable San Rafael, because it gets at what it is we're going to be trying to do in our public forum. By the way, it's on May eighth. It's called Firestorm, Wildfires, and Climate Change, and we're doing it together with the, in partnership with the fire department and others. But one of the main things we're trying to accomplish here is to show the interconnection between climate change and wildfires. And we think that the many provisions in the plan do this, and the points that Bill has made are cater that farther. And so we're seeing that our speakers are going to be covering these issues. I just wanted to say that it was, it's an opportunity, and I'm glad that the plan makes those points. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. You're next. Next, next. Directing traffic here.
Hi, I'm Robert Chatham.
You were first to stand, so you're next.
Yeah, all right. I'm Robert Chatham, and I live in the Highlands, Laklomen Highlands, and just wanted to ask that, I've read through the plans. I haven't gone through the second update totally. Would like a little bit more time to do that, and we really haven't had time to discuss it with our homeowners. So I don't want to slow down the train, because I really appreciate all the hard work. And Quinn, I've listened to her talk a couple of times about the plan, so all in favor of the idea, but some of the details I'm still, don't understand. And just want to point out that our homeowner association has taken this very seriously. We've been working with the fire department and doing a one-hundred-foot clearing. We haven't gotten there yet. We've done thirty feet so far, about a one-mile length on our parcel A, which is forty-six acres. Our HOA funded that with our money through an assessment, not using any city funds or anything. And we're continuing, it's a three-year project, and then after that, we'll continue to maintain that southern boundary as the vegetation management professionals recommended. So a new parcel tax I heard about, that's kind of what got me started. I, I kind of heard what you said. I hope you don't, I mean, we're doing it. We don't need another one, but, and we'd be more than glad to help out on any committee you're putting together to kind of share our ideas and so forth. So thank you for your time.
And thanks for the sixty grand that I think you put into that. Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, fire department. I wanted to thank Quinn for her excellent presentation tonight, but I wasn't clear, maybe you can clarify for me. You had a beautiful slide presentation. Is that incorporated in this latest draft that was just released, or will that be incorporated in a later release? Number one. Number two, is that going to be put up on the city website so that we, the public, can see it all? That would be great. And another question for the fire department, are we going to have any controlled burns this year? If so, that's great, if we can do it. If not, why not? Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll ask you to respond. I don't know what your plans are, quite frankly. I could be mistaken. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Thank you. There you go.
Well, we'll start, I'll start with those questions. First is, yes, the PowerPoint will be on this URL, let's say Wednesday, just let me breathe, I'll try tomorrow. And it is, the PowerPoint itself is not part of the plan, it's a reflection of the plan. I basically went through both drafts side by side, highlighting the significant changes, and that's what the presentation is, as well as, like Jim mentioned earlier, the staff report has about a page of bullet points that incorporate the biggest change items throughout the plan. I'll let Chief Senate speak to the controlled burns.
Hi, good evening. Control burns are something that are used here in Marin County. County Fire Department, Marin County Open Space District uses them on a limited basis under very controlled conditions, certain times of the year. Usually, they're burn piles. They're not burning of large areas of acreage. That can become problematic. You don't see that too often in areas around residential communities. You see that out in areas where the public is, is not living, so to speak. So if there is a mistake, there's time to, to control it. So burn piles are very common. Controlled burns of acreage, less common here in Marin County.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll just start with a specific question that you asked me, and then I'm going to turn it over to Quinn to go through the things that came up during the public comment that were questions. So just to clarify, the recommendation from the first page of the staff report is adopt resolution accepting the San Rafael Wildfire Prevention and Protection Action Plan as a master plan framework for wildfire mitigation moving forward.
What's your definition of framework?
How we've been defining it here, and I tried to explain that in my opening comments, is that it means that there, there are a number of things that will require further approvals from the city council. So, for example, there's a number of things also that we currently do. So in the back of the plan, there's a list of things that we do, what are new things. We don't need further council approval to set up a broom polling day on a Saturday morning. But anything that's in here, and really all the things that the public are focused on that is going to require additional municipal code changes, we will need further city council approval. So by framework, we mean it's the list of topics that we're suggesting that we want to hear from the council, do we have the right list, of what we, what the city's plan should be to respond better, more comprehensively to wildfire.
So actually, it's one of my questions, and I'll ask it now. The resolution clearly states, I hear what you're saying, that this is a final draft. So to me, there's a disconnect in what you're saying, but what we'd be approving says something different.
Final draft is the words that you're objecting to? Is that, so we, I'm sorry, is that right?
So what is it?
The words final draft?
What is it?
So what we, we typically call documents a draft until the city council accepts them. Even after you accept them, you're going to, you would be accepting this should you choose to do so tonight by a resolution, and anytime you wanted to see a change to the plan or any difference to the plan, you could adopt another resolution, make a change to the plan. So we call So, we call things draft until the council says, yeah, we accept that. But even then, you continue to make changes to plans all the time. For example, the climate change action plan, general plan, you know, almost every plan we have is available to you to come back and make changes to whenever you'd like to.
Thank you for that. Where are we at? Quinn, did you have something to add, and then we'll go to questions.
Oh, sure, appreciate that. There's a few additional comments, just clarifications based on some of the comments. And again, the feedback is always appreciated. Some of the specific things that were kind of questioned, I think, just to reiterate the point, are, for example, just the specific species are things that would get addressed throughout the process of actually updating the municipal code, which I think we already found half the advisory board through this meeting, so we can certainly move through that. With the hardening home points, which are really valid, which is why we added that specific item, and also with the item that addresses considering further adopting parts of building code 7A, that would also address some of the hardening homes, and we can certainly expand. The objective that specifically mentions hardening homes as written is increase the number of hardened homes in San Rafael. And so, if the council's direction is to look at potential municipal changes to do that, we can certainly include that within that item to that note. The plan was reorganized, and I know that's caused a little bit of confusion and certainly the timeframe as we sit here now, but it was reorganized to, again, match with some of the other documents in terms of breaking it into those three sections, the big, the big items, right? Vegetation management, notification evacuation, wildfire prevention and protection, which, again, is consistent with the 2017 lessons learned document. And that reorganization, again, there's not a, there's not a ton of substantial changes within the plan, and so, I want to just kind of reiterate that I know not, it is a big document, and it, I understand that it's a lengthy one to read, but we haven't swayed so far from where we were in January, where we've gathered the feedback since then, that necessarily a complete public review of this document and staff's opinion would be needed to update further. The last, I think those were, just one moment with my notes. Oh, the other point in terms of focusing the plan more on reducing ignitions rather than the mitigation, mitigation and prevention, which certainly are two different things, but both are covered within the plan. And while there might be fewer items addressing potential ignition, those are some of the ones that even through public comment were deemed as the most important, and staff sees that, and those are some of the things that we want to continue to focus on the most, whether that's fuel breaks, again, reducing ignition sources, things like that. And that, believes everything. Do you have anything else?
I'd like to comment just on the reorganization because I might have, and Kate might have complicated your life. Because when I first read the 37 points at the time, it seemed to me that they were not in a logical grouping, sort of, you know, sort of random thoughts in a way, all good points, but I felt that they, it would be easier to absorb the document by having the groupings that you've now provided. So, I don't think it's sleight of hand, I think it's just moving the items that were in without, without a specific reference, without a reference point. I thought it, as so many of the other changes, enhanced it. And I don't think it complicates, I think it makes it easier. This thing is going to move around a little bit, and if we're not going to make some changes to make it better, what's the point? That's not where you're at, and that's not where we're at, strikes me. So, to me, that's, that's whatever. If you would comment, though, on a priority that was brought up, talk to us about priority and how it relates to this plan, this framework, if you will.
Sure, so, and I think, you know, per some of our earlier conversations that Jim and I've had as well, and certainly the fire chief, I think, would agree, the whole plan is a priority. A lot of it is expanding what we already do, and the things we're already doing are the priorities that we can meet. Some of the way, some of the plan would have to get implemented and to the comments regarding funding, some of the grants that we've gone after have had to have certain qualifications to meet those. And so, in some cases, we might receive funding that we can only use on specific projects or specific parcel areas or things like that. And so, we certainly want to take advantage of that funding, but so, the prioritization even just of which parcels we potentially want to work on fuel mitigation first is partly dependent on funding, and then a lot of that is risk, right? The way we function on a day-to-day basis is based on risk and cost-benefit analysis. And so, the plan as a whole continues to be a priority, and we continue to work on what we can, and certainly, some of that is dependent on those other things. Does that clarify?
Yeah, for me, for me, it does. Perhaps an example would be, there are many, but one that sort of comes to mind, and that is our park ranger. Now, we've enhanced that capability to reduce the exposure, I would suggest. Is that a priority or not? Well, of course, it is a priority, but is it a higher priority than some of the other items? Well, I don't know. It's something we think in a comprehensive plan, you think, and you're the expert, a comprehensive plan is essential and enhances what it is we're going to provide for the community. So, the priority question is interesting if it was constrained. I'm hoping that it will not be necessarily constrained because by definition, we're increasing the risk by doing so. That's not where I'm at. In any case, John looks like he's chomping at the bits.
No, no.
Oh, I thought you were.
I'm happy to ask questions. I'm willing to wait, willing to wait as well. So, there's been, there's been a few questions and comments brought up about what we're actually doing here, and I did read there as well, and the language of the final draft, and that would tend to lead people to think, and myself included, that this is something that is what we're going to work on from here on out, and there's not a lot of ability to change when you hear the term "final." So, I guess the first question would be, can that word be changed in the resolution to preliminary draft or just draft in itself that would lead itself to what you're saying, is that this is a framework and that we're, that we're working forward on that? So, that's the first question. Is there anything that requires us to have that word "final" in there?
Absolutely not. You can definitely change the resolution, and actually, I read part of the resolution earlier about the framework, but the very next statement after that says, "Be it further resolved than any amendments to the wildfire prevention and protection action plan as deemed necessary by the city manager or his or her designee, from time to time, shall require an amendment to this resolution by city council action." So, what that's trying to say is, any changes that want to, that you would like to make to this on a go-forward basis, you can make to the plan. So, this would definitely, would not be the final draft by that definition.
Great. And then, as a kind of a follow-up to that question, what are the next steps in terms of community outreach? We hear that, and we know that you've been out there, and we appreciate the fact that you've gone to numerous associations, numerous groups, heard from them, but it's obvious that not everybody is aware of what the plan is and what, we can't obviously let this go on forever, and there's got to be some sort of cut where we're not going to, you know, allow for further, you know, community output and input. So, what's kind of the timeframe from where we go from here? I mean, were you planning on meeting with more groups over the next month, 60 days, 90 days before?
So, I'll start and then let these guys chime in and add their thoughts as well. I feel like until such time that the council says, yeah, that's the right framework, we're still working on this document. When the council gets to a point where you feel you're comfortable saying, yes, that's the right framework, now go work on the details and the implementation and any municipal code changes, then we're going to shift over to that. My personal opinion, and it's just mine, is that that's the important part of this because those are the things that are going to actually would be able to work with the community and make municipal code changes and change regulations and rules. So, the timing question depends on if the council is ready to accept the document, we would move right away into the next phase, which is, okay, now let's get into these things, and let's say, what does it really mean on the one about shake roofs or on vegetation management? What are those rules? What does that look like? Let's start getting input, let's work with the advisory committee. And we could start that immediately. If we're, if we're not doing that, then we're just, we're going back and we're getting input on the framework itself, and we're not going to, we're not going to be able to get into those details as soon.
Sure. And I agree that that's the proper next step. My thought was more along, do you see this, and I'm not going to hold you to this specific timeline, but do you see this as a, before we get to a point where we're actually submitting policy changes and ordinances, six months down the road, nine months down the road, 30 days from now? I mean, if you were in your ideal situation, where would this, where would that fall on that timeline?
I really hate to answer your questions with "it depends," but, so, I'll try not to. Some of the things that require ordinance changes, I think, are more straightforward. Maybe, Quinn, you could jump in with something that would be faster. The reason why I would say it depends is because we don't know what the community input will be and how much will need to be done before it's ready to come back to you. So, yeah, I think that's the right, as opposed to a year or a week, you know, I think something like a couple of months, something like that makes sense in order to flesh something out, get input on it, make sure people understand it, know what it is, be ready to come back to you. I think that'll probably be measured in months rather than longer than that.
So, do you envision this current framework that we're putting together to come back in a, after we go through community outreach and committees and subcommittee and come back together with a, truly a final plan that the council would adopt, and then subsequent or to that, are we going to have ordinances coming at one meeting, multiple meetings as things come up, or, I mean, I'm just trying to get an understanding to address, you know, if we put an ordinance on shake roofs, if we put an ordinance on a five-foot barrier, are those, is your, are you anticipating this happening all at one time or, you know, over numerous meetings?
Yeah, I think the intent, and I'm speaking a little bit for the fire chief here, but, or interpreting, I should say, the, there's some things that can be done quicker, like Jim mentioned, like the correcting the timeframe associated with the smoking in open space, that's basically scratching, I think, five words in one to make those consistent. But I think the intent would be to come up with some, some working drafts to bring those to community, to start with the community, do some workgroups, workshops, that's something that I know came up at the San Pedro Coalition meeting last Monday, and certainly something we want to continue doing, the advisory group would be excellent, to come up with those drafts, workshop. And a lot of those, the ones we want to push a little sooner are the vegetation standards for citywide, partly to, the longer we wait on those, the more fire seasons we're potentially losing with those risks not eliminated. And so, we want to get those in place, give homeowners and property owners as much time as possible, but we also reckon, every spire season, we're getting lucky, right? And we want to reduce that risk. At the end of the year, the fire and, chief senate, fire and building code will be updated, and so, some of the building codes would probably just get wrapped into that. So, for example, the 7A consideration, we would probably incorporate into the rest of that with workgroups and everything up before that as well, but again, kind of prioritizing certain sections. We wouldn't necessarily be bringing you one municipal code change every meeting, they would be grouped, and I imagine a vegetation-focused one, and then more of a building code and other vegetation standards further later in the year.
Yes, and obviously, each one of those, as they were presented to us, would have a chance for community input and first reading, second reading type of piece. And then, on the final piece, for me, on the finance side of it, you know, I seen the staff report that there are estimates of initial costs, some decreasing annually, if we were to implement this plan and to maintain it, and understanding how those would be funded, I think as we, as we go through this process using this framework, that we really need to refine those, not just for the current years and the first couple of years to, but to really dig, dig in deep and understand what this is going to be as an ongoing piece. Because I could see us spending, you know, money to clear out a lot of brush, get the fire roads cleaned up and do all that, but if we don't have a funding mechanism in place for ongoing maintenance, then we're addressing this again, you know, two or three years down the road with overgrowth and unmaintained fire roads. So, I'd really like to see, you know, in, understanding in this framework that a really well-defined funding plan, because what I don't want to get is you guys spending a whole lot of time, while it's very necessary and very important, and going out there and putting together this great, you know, framework and plan for us, only to come back and say, hey, this is, you know, $10 million upfront and additional $5 million a year for the next 25 years, and then try and figure out how to play, you know, pay for it, because then what we end up with is a really nice glossy book that we put on a shelf, you know, with other plans that I've seen, not necessarily in the city, but in government, where they spend a lot of money and time on a plan and then have no funding mechanism to actually do it. So, you know, I think that needs to be a priority, as we talk about priorities, is understanding how we're going to pay for this and what the, and what the odds are that we're going to do it. We can talk about all sorts of funding mechanisms, but as we know that the community is, is getting stressed out a lot about additional taxes and an ever-increasing property tax bill, if that's the way that it goes, and really having the ability to define that and then put it to the voters to see what, you know, if they want that or not. So, that would be my suggestion. Thanks.
Yeah, I'd just like to suggest, John, that as a member of the finance committee, you're going to see that firsthand, because one of the requests early on was to cost this thing out, and that's one of the reasons why it's, I think, imperative for us to address the plan today, tonight, so that the staff can then take it and go the next step. And it's the community involvement, refinement of the details that we've been asked for, I certainly am a detailed guy, I agree with that. And then, what's the related costs that we can go if necessary, and I think it is, but we'll say, if it's necessary, go out to the community and, just as you suggested, say, here's, here's what we recommend, primarily the fire department, they're the experts, to put us as a community a better place, and here's, you know, here's what it's going to cost. I don't think there's any secret about this, quite frankly. We're doing all we can afford to do right now, and while it's significant, it's not as complete as the fire department is now, the fire professionals are now telling us we need to be, I'm convinced of it.
No, no, absolutely. And my question is more along the lines of, you know, where the sources of funding are going to come from and identifying those potential sources, because we've heard us talk, you know, applying for grants, and typically, grants are not an ongoing source of funding, usually one time, maybe over renewable over a couple of years. But again, if, if this, this and my, I could be way off, but I envision this as a 10- to 15-plus-year plan of needing funding to adequately do this right and to keep it, keep it from just having to start all over again from scratch.
And you're right about that, certainly. In my view, we'll talk about that. Where are we at here? Kate?
Well, I think I would agree that everybody in this room, outside this room, totally supports the idea of proactively addressing wildfires. So, on that, we're on the same page, and I'm absolutely on the same page. And Quinn, you've been instrumental in going out to the community and doing that, so thank you. It's funny, as we were talking, I've been grappling with this whole process and how it's kind of come to the council and the way we've asked for community input, and I think some of the comments that Jim just said actually really clarified for me, because he talked about the climate change action plan and the general plan 2040, and in all of those, we would have the community vet it, and then it would come forward more with the input already embedded in the plan. So, the part that I'm having a hard problem with is I have a plan in front of me that doesn't have that community input yet. And so, when you compare it to those two plans, that's the way that we, that's the way we've, we've always done it, or the way the two, I've actually been very integral to both of those plans in the past. So, that makes sense to me because a lot of the comments, and Quinn, you said this, that there wasn't a big difference between the initial one we saw in January and this one. And you're right, when I look at the ones that people were really concerned about, 1, 2, 3, 17, and 28, they were almost identical in wording, and you're saying, well, we have the input, we hear you, but it's not in here yet. But that's a real disconnect for the community. If you go out there and say, "Come and tell us what you think, we're going to put it in the plan, and then we're going to approve it, and then we're going to put in the ordinances, and we're going to prioritize and all that stuff," then the community feels confident, and they trust us, and they, we need to have, and one of the, public stated it so well, we need to have the public support and compliance. That, if that doesn't happen, this plan's not going to go anywhere, like, we absolutely are all in this together. So, I feel like in our asking you all to be bold and bringing the staff word, you guys did an amazing job doing that, and we kind of asked for a process that now that we're down here, I don't know if it really works with what we're asking the community to do, because we're saying, well, trust us, even though we're, you know, it says "final," which it does, or may or may not in the resolution, you know, the staff report says, "If approved, they will work to achieve objectives in the plan." So, I think there's some mixed messages there, and I know it's not intentional, which is why I started with saying, we all want the same thing here. And having the community support, trust, and involvement is key. I absolutely can't stress that enough. And I hear what you're saying, that this is a framework, this is a framework, but when I look in here, I look at number one or number three, those are very specific, those are very specific. So, again, it's hard for me to say, yeah, this is just a general plan. So, again, it's hard for me to, to say, yeah, this is just a general plan, because the words right here are very specific. We have the actual names of the vegetation, we have the, the distances, it's, it's, again, I, I think there's, for me, there's a little bit of a disconnect of what we're asking from the community and what we have in front of us. And with that, with the community process on the other side, the way it is with the General Plan and the way it is with the Climate Change Action Plan, the two plans that you referenced, I would have more understanding about WUI standards. Those are opaque to me, I, those are not words that I, I mean, I understand the words, but I don't understand, I know what the ask is, but I don't know the implications or the impact on the community to do that, and they don't either, yet, because there's thirty-eight things in here. And so, again, approving something that none of us, or I'm not sure, I'll speak for myself, Public Resource Code forty-two ninety, boy, when we did our resident engagement plan, one of the things we promised we'd do is like to have words that we understood that weren't policy. I don't know what that is, that's number thirteen, I went online and tried to look it up. Again, I understand the, I, I don't understand what the implications are or the impact on our community. Reduce fuels along roadways, number twenty-eight, we're talking about Point San Pedro, we're talking about D Street and Crystal Park. So, again, these are just a few examples of where we're asking people to prove stuff, we're being asked, I'm being asked, you know, as a, a, a voice for our community to approve something that I don't totally understand, and I think it's because the process got a little bit, to me, out of whack, and, and many of the comments, people that came here tonight, thank you for coming here tonight, you actually had emailed those, you spoke in January, I heard you, I went to another, other meetings, you saw all that, yet there's no indication of it in the document. So, that, I mean, you know, we're being heard, yes, we're being heard, but again, I, I, I think that we absolutely have to be in partnership on this, there is no way we will be successful otherwise. So, to me, that is a big issue. And then finally, I want to speak to the prioritization. Eighty percent of our land in San Rafael, Marin County is open space, so we're talking about the twenty percent, so when I'm looking at prioritization, and, and we use the word priority, but I'm actually thinking prioritization, so how do we go at the plan or how do we get the input recognizing that the majority of the fires, probably all, maybe a hundred percent start in open space, so maybe we look at it that way, so the funding and the resources use that as the fat should be the framework. So, so I, I had some concerns, and, and we've been told very clearly by the community, by the people that came here, two HOAs or neighborhood associations took the time to write a letter and saying, wait a minute, we want to give more input. I think part of that's because of the way the process has a little bit, been a little bit disjointed. So, so those are my comments. I, I absolutely support the direction that we're going in, to have, to support a plan at this point, for me, which doesn't reflect any of the community input I've heard, or very little, you did change, you know, twenty-seven and thirty-eight, so there were some in there, but again, it wasn't consistent enough. So, I would, I would support maybe, I want to say slowing down, because I don't, I want us to keep moving forward, so I don't want to use those words, but really recognizing, absolutely recognizing that we have to be in partnership, and in order to do that, we need to take the time to actually be in partnership with our community, so.
Well, I would, I would, I would, I would say that the, the staff has done the job to help us do that. This gives a point for discussion. I would furthermore say that, I mean, I've been to, you haven't, but I've been to probably six or seven, including all of the Federation folks here, not very long ago, when the presentation was made by Quinn and the chief, and we have, we have, you know, we added up quite a bit of input, and you're suggesting, I, I think it's, quite frankly, I don't think it's fair to the process, because I do think that they've incorporated, and, and for you to suggest otherwise is contradictory to what I heard.
Well, that's true.
And so, I, I don't know if you're debating the question with staff, but I, 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 I wonder why, why that's the case.
Yeah, no, thank you for offering me the opportunity to clarify further. So, if you look at number one, and I have gone to a couple of the meetings, very clearly would be required, a lot of people had comments about that, and so, again, that to me is disconnect, these pile, I mean, the, the input we've received, I'm just saying, what I've heard hasn't come out reflected, especially in those, and really, out of the thirty-eight, there are less than half a dozen probably that really require a big ask on the part of our homeowners and our property owners, both of their time and of their resources. To remove a huge acacia tree is twenty-five-hundred, three thousand dollars, so, I mean, this, this is real, these are real asks. So, of those, I mean, the other three, yeah, they're fine, and, and they're not the ones that necessarily require the community input, but on the ones that require the community input, I, I, and I could show you the two drafts, there has not been a change in the wording, even though we've gone out and had all that input.
But this is, I mean, Jim said it, I think, better than I can, and that is, this is a starting point from which we can have a reference point, it's like starting a trip. Where are you going, what's your start point, which will help you define where you're going in that, in that trip? If you don't know where you're going to start, then how do you know where you're going to go or end up? I think it's a, I think it's an excellent job done by our staff, I think it does incorporate, because I've talked with them about it, many of the, the thoughts from the community, not, not all, I mean, quite frankly, a lot of times, the community doesn't come out until the bulldozer showed up. So, you know, now maybe sends a signal that it's time to get serious about this, and I appreciate certainly the comments that are made, but, you know, we started this in August and, and got serious in terms of the draft, thanks to Quinn, and, and, and January, and if we don't push forward, you know, we've got some steps, and let's face it, one of those steps is to, to determine our funding source, and that's going to be a challenge, but I think we all know that one of the possibilities, no secret, is parcel tax. And what does that look like? Is it static over a period of time? Is it, is it loaded at the front end and tapered off, or what? We do know that the, the, the public is, and I, and I think you have, and I suspect everyone, have received a lot of input with regard to, let's move forward on this, that's the expectation of our community. Our community is not saying, let's go through this for four years to try to refine every last word. Our community is saying, look, Paradise burned down, Santa Rosa burned down, get it in gear, folks, let's go, and we have our professionals that have done a, I've said this before and I truly mean it, an outstanding job of getting us further down the road to help our community address this real threat. This is not like Climate Change Action Plan where you can do it over a ten-year period or whatever, this is a real threat. If the fire comes and burns your house down, I am not going to feel very good about that, quite frankly, and I don't think you would either. So, I think it's, it's urgent, as expressed by, at least to me, and I presume everybody here, a great number of those within our community, and we've got a substantial plan that we can improve upon as we go through the process. But we don't have a huge amount of time if we're going to, to ask the community to support this thing financially, because that's what this is all about. It truly is. And, and we, I think we owe it to the community to say, here's an approach that has been developed by our professionals, and quite frankly, sort of John's point, folks, here's what you get, thirty-eight points, and if you're willing to support it, fine, if you're not, then suffer the consequences, because that's, this county is ready to go, man. This county is ready to go, I think, I think our two professionals would agree, all of our professionals would agree with it. So, I'm not, I'm not willing to sit on my hands and let's get, you know, take word final out, okay, take the word final out, I mean, let's go. So, anyway, that's how I feel about it. In any case, other comments?
I see this as sort of a, a work list. These are the things we're going to work on, because we don't have the specifics yet exactly, we don't have the ordinance language, we don't have, we don't have the exact implementing legislation to actually do these things, but we're going to work on them, and I see that, I, I hear our staff saying, this is our best professional judgment as to things we should work on. And I, I hear tonight, I heard at least three different groups, working groups, advisory groups, if you will, that, that we need to get the input on the specifics to go forward. My first one, I would call the landscaping working group, and I think the chair was here tonight, so we can have the landscaping working group, they'll have two assignments to work on the templates, and also to work on the prohibited species. So, I see that as one group. Another group I see is the residential hardening group, these are the roofs, the vents, and the gutters, and that's probably the, the realtors and the homeowners groups, get together and work on all the specifics of that, have all your input, bring that to a, to a, a specific proposal, which is sort of, that's the way we do things here, we work things through, and then they come forward to us. And then the third group I, I hear is the financial group, but is going to be part of sort of the long, thinking about the long-term, multiple budget cycles of projects that need to get done, and to say, okay, this is what it's going to cost, and this is, you know, these are the grants we can get, these are the areas we can rely on the county to do, these are, and we work our way down until there's stuff that we have to do, and then we come up with a, a funding plan. So, I, I see that as another group, working through all of these details. So, that's how, how I see this working out over the next couple, you know, two or three quarters, in bringing this, these really ideas to, to an actual fruition. That said, it seems to me there are some things that are just low-hanging fruit and we should go pick them right away, like surely we can prohibit the sale of Scotch Broom in Marin County, surely we can do that. You know, there's, there's got to be, there, there are some simple things that you don't need to wait six months to bring us an ordinance to, to do that, and there are probably other things that no reasonable person would, would oppose, that we can bring forward on a more expedited basis. But I think we need to get our working groups organized and get the input, because Consul Mollin is absolutely right, we have got to do this together. If people don't feel like they are involved in this, that their voices were heard, and that this is their plan, then it's not going to happen. So, that's why we need, we need our working groups and we need to get their input, get them feeling that this is, this is something they're doing for their community, and that's how we move forward and actually get this done in a collaborative and together way. So, but we have to start somewhere, so I am in favor of this list of items as it will evolve over time and as the input will come and as it will be developed by our staff and with the input of all the people in our community. So, I, I'm in favor and support adopting it tonight.
Andrew. First of all, I want to thank the people who showed up this evening and, and had the courage to speak and share their perspective on the plan for or against, and then also thanks again to Quinn and everyone else who have worked so hard in trying to present something that the community would find favor in. I, I want to say that I, in addition to the comments we've heard here this evening, I heard some of the same comments, particularly Greg, from your presentation at the Point San Pedro Road Coalition meeting that hosted, as we heard, HOAs, and Bonnie, if you're still here, thank you for convening that, other HOAs and individuals shared their input, and unfortunately, midway through Greg's presentation, I had to leave for a prior engagement, but I heard enough to make me appreciate exactly what some of the comments we've heard here this evening, which is, we really need to understand the details, there needs to be transparency, we need to know what the priorities and the costs are. Absolutely agree with all of that, but, and this is the important caveat, I don't think that prevents us from doing something this evening. So, what I think we can do this evening is incorporate some of the deepest reservations we've heard this evening into the, the document, and make it explicit, and what I have in mind is, put a caveat at the outset of the document that makes it explicit, several things explicit, that this is a document that we expect will, will continue to evolve in response to public input. So, to that extent, it is not a final document, we can call it what we want to plan, a framework, I don't care, but I think we need to keep faith with the community to ensure that this document will evolve in response to the continuing feedback that we say we're going to solicit, and, and of course, we have to do that. And then we also need to make it clear, and I don't know whether we need language to this effect, but to the extent that we're going to make legal or regulatory changes, there has to be a full and fair public opportunity before those changes are made, I heard that loud and clear from Greg and from others, before we're going to exact penalties, fines, assessment fees, we have to be transparent about what they are, and that includes whether there's a parcel tax in the offing, whatever those amounts are, so a fee for not doing a vegetation management plan or seeking some other funding source, we are square with the community about what exactly it is that we're asking for, and we get that feedback before we implement or pass that. And then also, we're very clear about whether they're intended or unintended, the consequences of what we're aspiring to in this plan, we have to confront those consequences and be honest about those. So, we've heard this evening about some of them, an example would simply be, and this is from MAR, but there are others, if we're going to require or put in place a point-of-sale obligation, what does that mean to someone who has to, on very short notice, sell their home? Does that create a consequence that we really want to flow through our community, even though it only affects two hundred homes with shake roofs? So, let's be transparent, let's do the follow-up that's necessary, but let's move this along, and I think we can move this along by being honest about what this document is intended to be tonight, it's intended to be something that is aspirational, and that the details will be fleshed out with a lot of public involvement going forward. I made a point during our consent calendar approval process in, in my comments before making the motion, I made the point of pointing out two issues that I thought were very important to the community, it was the cannabis and the changing the speed limits on the couple of roadways, that, that was the second, or tonight was the second public hearing we're having on those two important issues, because if we're going to pass a regulation or an ordinance in the city of San Rafael that affects any of our community members, their homes, their pocketbooks, as it relates to fire safety, that's going to not only come back to this council, it's going to come back to us twice. That's in addition to any public meetings that we have in order to solicit feedback before it even comes to us. What I heard loud and clear at the Coalition meeting and again tonight is, if we're going to do stuff up here, we need to make sure that everyone here is involved. So, I think the plan can be that, it's not perhaps as well-framed as it could be to make it clear to the community, but we can improve it with some judicious language tweaks so that the community is, is reassured that not only are they being heard, but they will continue to be heard as this document evolves.
And I, I'll just add that I completely agree. We want to make this for the community, this is not something that's going to be published and put away, we want this to work for the community, that's what's driving us up here, and to get the input will only improve it if we all agree upon it, certainly, but it will improve it, and that's our intention, to make it as good as we can, I mean, come on, that's, that's, that's what we're trying to do up here. So, I, I completely agree, and, and I think your qualification is, is, is good, and certainly I, I support that. But if you think about it just organizationally, I think it makes some sense too, we've asked the staff to put together some thoughts. Now, if we ask them to, to go through this in its entirety, this is a little extreme, but if they, they went through, they spent hours and hours and hours, and we know they don't have extra time, developing ordinances, et cetera, and then we said, well, no, we decided not to do that, for whatever, well, is that the way you would manage the staff? No, it isn't. I mean sequentially, okay, the framework, now the detail, many of us have talked about that, certainly we talked about it this morning. The detail is something we're going to add to it, like you would any preliminary plan, here it is, and that will be discussed in this open, you'll hold us to it, I will, you know, we all will, hold it to, to a promise to the public, because again, we, we want their input, we don't have all the answers, that's for darn sure. So, the process, I think, does carry out, and also, timing is, is somewhat critical, folks, I mean, it really is. I, I'm getting beat on, it's not just this stuff, but we're all getting, I think, the clear message that this isn't one of those government deals we can talk about and we can fret over for three years and put it in the shelf, we've seen, we said, we've seen evidence, and the community knows this, and I've received it big time, the concern, and trying to respond to that, and I think that's what this represents, I'm convinced of that. There's a lot more work to be done, but at least it gives you a starting point to sort through the next step that you've identified, and we've got some, we've got some work as a community to say, okay, how are we going to provide for this if that's what we decide to do? So, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, in other words. You look like you have a comment.
Well, I mean, I don't know that I'm prepared to make a motion here, but I, I, I think you, I-
I'm sorry, the, the public is close.
I, I think you made an important point in your comment to the city manager just now, I think the document should indicate that it is a starting point for additional work to be done in the community. to be done in the community. So to the extent that it's a starting point, we expect the doc, the plan to continue to evolve in response to public feedback, and that as we undertake the hard work of developing specific language for each of the 38 points, whether it be accompanied by a follow-on ordinances or not, that the public is involved, and that we make it clear that any legal changes are going to get, not, pardon me, not simply the two public hearings before the council, but that's going to go out to the community as well.
Yeah, makes perfect sense to me. To put you on, can't tell if you wish to comment or not, and if you do, you're welcome to, and then we'll ask.
Quinn's just pointing out to me that there's a section in the intent of the document that talks about it being a framework, and that it's, the plan's presented a framework as it moves forward, establish benchmarks, provide opportunities for evaluation and improvement. So if you'd like us to try to embellish that further along the lines of what you were just saying, we're happy to do that.
Yes, I want it to be explicit that it's a framework, and that we expect the document will continue to evolve in response to public feedback. And this, particularly since the draft we're looking at tonight, hasn't been fully vetted by the community. It does attempt to incorporate a lot of input that we received over the 20-plus public meetings that you've had, Quinn. But, you know, I mean, we, we could iterate this and iterate this forever and never get it done, which is why I'm anxious to see us get started this evening. But that doesn't mean that the comments we've gotten this evening and will continue to get shouldn't be incorporated as appropriate. You know, just one little example Greg brought up at the meeting, and it might have been in some of his emails. He had a concern about, and Kate will appreciate this, the proposed adoption of Public Resource Code 4290 and 4291. I didn't go and read those provisions, Greg, until after that community meeting, and I read the entirety of Sections 4290 and 4291. And I am tempted to say I completely agree with you as to 4291. I'm not sure I completely agree, but that's something we need to dig into. Because when a provision in the state Public Resources Code says that it applies to mountains, forested areas, and grasslands, and we say we're going to consider adopting it for an urban center like San Rafael, we've got to rethink that. But there are numerous examples of that. You raised, and others have raised, where we've got to go back, we've got to decide, is this right for us? But that doesn't prevent us from launching or starting a plan right now.
And it's perfectly lead into the motion.
Oh. Well, then I, my motion would be, I propose that we adopt the resolution. Is it, I don't have the recommended language, is it a resolution that we're...
Yeah, there's a resolution that, that actually is a little bit inconsistent with the tenor of your comments. It seems to me that maybe we should make some changes in the resolution as well.
I'm trying to get to it here.
It's at the very, very end, takes forever to get to it.
Can you take a shot at it?
I have a couple of ideas. I'm thinking that we should...
Here it is, if you want.
Say that we're, we're adopting a work plan...
It's not the...
For bringing forward measures, forward measures on, for wildfire mitigation, prevention, and protection. By the San Rafael City Council, something like, to capture those ideas.
And you've heard the comments. Jim, can you help us with this?
Sure. I'll ask the city attorney to see if he agrees, but I think there's two now, therefore, be it resolves, in the resolution. It sounds like those two would stand, and you would like maybe a third that just expresses the points that Vice Mayor McCullough is saying more clearly, which is that we fully expect the document to evolve. There were three. That's the first one. If there's any legal or regulatory changes, we will have an extensive public process before coming back to the city council, and that we need to be clear and evaluate consequences. So I think if that's the motion...
And financial, both financial...
And financial.
Yeah.
I think that's consistent with the discussion, and I also will point out that I like what Councilmember Bushy just said, but I also find that consistent with the word framework in the first now, therefore, be it resolved. Do you have that in front of you, Councilmember McCullough?
I have it here. Yeah, I've got it.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
You've got it.
Yeah, I've got it, I'm just writing over it. It's terminology, so I think we can probably approach it by adding another, another provision. And did we have extensive public outreach, is that, and the working groups and input? Is that on your, what I wrote down was clear feedback. Is that provided for in the McCullough amendment?
I think we can, I think we can explicitly reference the fact that one or more working groups or sub-working groups will be convened to ensure that the public output that we envision actually takes place.
And I think that's simply direction to staff that it certainly has received clearly from council in this discussion. So if the council's comfortable with the language that the city manager suggested for the additional now, therefore, at the conclusion of the resolution, then we would just request that the motion to adopt the resolution, request to incorporate, incorporate that language that the city manager just stated.
I would be delighted to make that motion.
Wait a second.
Well, I will second it then.
Nudan second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Hi.
Councilmember Colin.
No.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm out of carries, 4-1, and thanks again for your help on this and continuing. And Greg, you are on that committee, believe it or not.
I can be the chair.
Thanks. Let's move on. Where's my, where's my thing? Oh, thanks. We'll move on to councilmembers' reports, requests for future agenda items, any?
And one of those ironic things in life, I actually attended the Marin Ready Together, which is the countywide group that's being pulled together with, represented from all the jurisdictions, on behalf of Mary Beth today. So everybody, every jurisdiction in the room was represented, and there was fire personnel from Nevada, Southern Marin, and Central Marin. And basically, Mary Beth will be part of this group, but they really talked about what they're doing at the county level. And again, as we all know, wildfire doesn't know jurisdictions, so what can we do to be working together and to be on the same page? They talked a lot about their Community Wildlife Prevention Plan, wildfire, excuse me, Prevention Plan, as well as Lessons Learned, as those two guiding documents, which we've also referred to. And the other thing that they spent a lot of time talking on and sharing is PG&E and their role in the community going forward. And one thing that they shared with the group is that going forward, PG&E will be more likely to do those proactive shut-offs, power downs. So that will be part of the messaging that they'll be working, telling the community about. And what PG&E will be doing differently is after they do the power, the shutdown, power shutdowns, they will go and actually want to visually inspect any lines before the power goes back on. So it, people could be without power for up to 72 hours, and how, what's the resilience of the community around that? So there was quite a bit of discussion about PG&E, and how that will affect our community, and how we work with our community, again, so that they will be resilient in those times. And then they also went through their regional approach elements. Again, obviously, many things, similar things came up, additional staffing, additional funding, and using fire safe Marin is a big push. So I'm sure Mary Beth, you're going to learn a lot being in that group, and it'll be great, because you'll be able to bring it back here to us.
And thank you for attending on my behalf today. The meeting was during the business day, and it's difficult for me to get that.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for going to that. Obviously, we're going to have to do a lot to coordinate with the county to make this as effective as we possibly can. And I'll just pass on a bunch of things, but perhaps of interest, we did meet, in connection with the renter protection plan, and we're going to meet one more time with the attorney, and we've got our committee at five. We should have that at the next, I would hope, at the next meeting, the refinement of what we talked about previously. So it's moving along. And with that, let's see, consent, with that, excuse me, we shall adjourn.